Okay, good evening. For the first time in the history of Mansfield, I would like to call the Wednesday, October 24, 2018 Select Board Meeting to order. And ask everyone in attendance to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20E, this meeting is being recorded by the Mansfield Cable Access Channel. It will be broadcast at various times over several days. The law permits members of the public to make their own recording of this meeting after giving notice to the Chair and subject to certain restrictions. If anyone in the audience intends to make a video or audio recording of this meeting, I would ask that you please inform me at this time by coming to the mic and stating your name and address. Your cooperatives appreciate it. And I believe Donna will be taping or recording her thing, and anyone else? Okay, that's it. Thank you. Okay. We have three public hearings to go through. Hopefully, we'll go through them expeditiously, and we'll move on to the topics after that. So with that being said, I will turn it over to the Select Board Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 82, Section 22, notice is hereby given by the Board of -- by the Select Board of their intent to lay out the following streets as a public way at a public hearing on October 24, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. in the Select Board's meeting room, 3A B Town Hall, 6th Park Row, in this regards Forest Heights Drive. The purpose of this hearing will be to accept public comment on the acceptance of the way. All those interested in or wishing to be heard on this issue should appear at the time and place stated. I move to open the public hearing.
We have a second. We have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, none. Motion carries. Public hearing is open. Okay. Shaun. Forest Heights.
Forest Heights is a subdivision way, as you recall, that we did not vote on in the spring.
Yep.
So this board carried it over to the special town meeting this fall. Mr. Perry Demascio is the developer. I was out there on-site this afternoon -- oh, this morning, excuse me, with Micah Hearn, subdivision inspector, and Rick Alves, the town engineer. We walked through the site with Mr. Demascio. The recommendation from staff is to support acceptance at the special town meeting this fall as a public way. The planning board has not voted their recommendation. They will so at their next meeting.
So there's no issue with us voting now?
No.
I don't want them to think that we're stepping on their toes, but I'm sure they understand the process with the way we have our meetings.
Right, they do. And there is $40,000 still being held in surety.
Okay. All right. Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Steve?
Just a quick one. Is there a punch list at all, or are you complete?
The punch list is complete. There will still be -- the street will be swept prior to the release of surety.
That's all I have.
Okay. Before I close the public hearing, is there anyone from the public that has any comments on Forest Heights Drive? Okay, seeing none. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, none. The public hearing is closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Forest Heights Drive, subject to final inspection from the planning -- planning board, the planning department.
Thank you.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, and we second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, none. Motion carries. Four zero. You are all set for now, Mr. Demascio. Thank you. Okay.
One minute.
One down. Public hearing number two.
Wait till 6:30.
We can use Scriv news.
We're there.
Close enough. Go ahead.
In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 82, section 22, notice is hereby given by the Select Board of their intent to lay out the following streets as a public way at a public hearing on October 24, 2018, at 6:35 p.m. in the Select Board's meeting room, 3A B Town Hall, 6th Park Row, regarding Marie Drive. The purpose of this hearing will be to accept public comment on the acceptance of the way. All those interested in or wishing to be heard on the issue should appear at the time and place stated. Mr. Chair, I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, none. Motion carries. Public hearing is open. Shaun.
We, again, met on-site today. There is no punch list for Marie Drive. All items have been completed. I would recommend that the board support the acceptance of Marie Drive as a public way at special town meeting in November.
Okay. And for the folks at home, this is a street that's part of the Old Willow Dale area.
That's correct. Off Willow Street. There's $65,000 remaining in surety. Actually, it's $265,000 remaining in surety, but that will be reduced to $65,000.
Now, there's another street in there, right? That will be another road acceptance?
That's exactly right. There are two remaining streets that will be accepted, probably annual town meeting.
We're holding enough money to cover that one.
That will be a separate surety, but yes.
Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? Steve?
Planning board?
Same thing.
If they find, recommend it.
They -- no, the planning board has not recommended any streets for acceptance, but they will at their next meeting.
Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? Seeing none. Anyone from the public have any comments on Marie Drive? Seeing none, call for a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, none. Motion carries. The public hearing is closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move to approve Marie Drive, subject to the completion of the final inspection from the planning department and road inspector within a week of special town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, none. Motion carries. Four zero. That is approved from the board of the Select Board. Sorry. Okay. We have one more. We have to wait two minutes. So is there anything we can do real quick? Can we do number nine? We're waiting for -- do we need a -- is Caitlin coming? You guys know?
No.
I think that was already approved as a subdivision in Easton, that's a couple lots in Mansfield. I think it's all ready to go, just a matter of signing off on it. So that is item nine, the conservation restriction from NB Realty Trust, Nye Realty, and Jess Development LLC. That Jess has nothing to do with me. Could you read the motion, sir?
Indeed. I move to approve and sign the conservation restriction from NB Realty Trust, Nye Realty Trust, and Jess Development LLC.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, none. Motion carries. Four zero. That is approved. Thank you. You want to do the consent agenda real quick? Just make a motion to approve that. Someone?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Four zero. The consent agenda is approved. We'll do the warrants afterwards, okay? How are we doing on time?
One more minute. Two more minutes.
Okay.
Would you like to clear number 10 for easy?
Yes, there's no update.
There is no update. We're waiting for November 19th to have a next update from Micah Hearn.
Okay. Will there be a segment update later?
Yes, there will be.
Okay, so we'll hold off on that. And I think that, Steve, we are close enough that by the time we vote on that motion, it'll be time. So if you could start.
All right. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 82, Section 22, notice is hereby given by the Select Board of their intent to lay out the following streets as a public way at a public hearing on October 24, 2018, at 6:40 p.m. in the Select Board's meeting room, 3A B Town Hall, 6th Park Row, in this regards Dutton Drive. The purpose of this hearing will be to accept public comment on the acceptance of the way. All those interested in or wishing to be heard on this issue should appear at the time and place stated. Mr. Chair, I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries. Public hearing for Dutton Drive is open. Shaun.
Thank you. This subdivision way is also fully complete. There is no outstanding punch list. Mr. Mark Caselli is here in the front row. Chris, did you bring any of your residents with you?
I don't see anyone here.
There are no outstanding issues. There is surety still being held. As I said, there are no outstanding punch list items. The board had -- planning board has not voted on this yet either. They will vote all three at their next meeting. My recommendation to them will be to support acceptance at the special town meeting in November.
When you're meeting with them, that we wanted to be respectful of them, but just the way it's lining up, that would be appreciated?
Absolutely.
Are there any questions of the board for Mr. Burke? None? Any questions from the public on Dutton Drive before we close the public hearing? Okay, seeing none?
Mr. Chair, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries. The public hearing is closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
I move to approve Dutton Drive, subject to the completion of the final inspection from planning department and road inspector within a week of special town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries. Four zero. We'll see you at town meeting, Mr. Mark Caselli. Shaun, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're moving right along. The next item on the agenda is a budget discussion with the school committee, the finance committee, and our illustrious senator, Senator Paul Feeney. I would like to thank you, Paul, for coming, Senator. It's nice that government officials are here with us, trying to help us through this process. So welcome, sir, and we appreciate your time. I know you have a busy schedule, so thank you for joining us tonight, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Okay. Sure. If the -- I don't know how you want to do it. If the committees want to come up, or if the chairs want to come up, so if the FinCom, school, anybody else want to come, that's fine. But we can go get a little kumbaya going here.
Thank you.
And I think it's good that we're -- really good that we're talking about this now. We're not waiting until next April, panicking about things, because every year, we say it's a tough budget, and every year, it's a tough budget. It gets tougher every year. But us working all together now, it's -- I think it's very collegial, and I appreciate it. So what was the plan on starting this? Is Senator Feeney going to start us off?
Sure.
Senator?
Sure. Mr. Chairperson, I appreciate it for the invite to come by and just say hello, give a little bit of an update, and then to listen, so I can be an effective senator going forward when we start crafting our budget next year. Just a quick update. Last time I was here, I think we were talking about some of the priorities and the things that are in the pipeline throughout the Commonwealth when it came to crafting the budget. Our formal sessions ended on July 31st, and although there was a little bit of agita in making sure that we got a budget to the governor on time, we were able to do that, balanced budget, and both the House and the Senate Conference Committee came out with a great budget, sent it to the governor. We got it done in time before we ended our formal sessions on August 1st. So a couple of highlights just on that budget for FY19. About a $42 billion budget, $4.9 billion towards K-12 education, which was an increase from FY18. Another significant investment in the opioid, the opioid crisis, a little over $200 million in that, which, you know, was something that I think was a priority, not only for myself and the representative here, but throughout the Commonwealth. We're able this year to invest significantly through some conservative budgeting, both from the administration side and in the House and the Senate, to increase the stabilization fund, the rainy day fund, in case we hit another economic downturn. Roughly $368 million for this fiscal year, which would bring the total up to $2.15 billion at the end of FY19. Still some conversations about whether or not that's enough. You know, I think next year, we're going to have to make another significant investment there, but through kind of conservative budgeting and making sure that we're balancing, hitting all of our priorities, but at the same time, understanding that we don't want to end up in 2008 again, where cities and towns are left looking for funding. There was an increase in Chapter 70, as I said. It's an all-time high, $4.91 billion, which was about $160 and 1/2 million over FY18. And then about an 8% increase for charter school reimbursement for FY18, roughly about $7 million. So those were some of the high points. Certainly, the FY20 budget, as we start to build that out, which is, I think, you know, we can start listening now and figuring out what that's going to look like once we have a revenue hearing after the first of the year, and we come up with a consensus revenue projection, we'll be able to come back and then work from those numbers. Just so you know, one of my priorities, and it's, you know, obviously, your town manager has been great in reaching out in this board as well, but really throughout my district, you know, the kind of rallying call was, look, we need to be able to budget quickly and expeditiously. And I think sometimes it goes too long in the legislature, so we want to make sure this year, especially with a leadership change, that, you know, we're kind of, we're putting the pressure from the ground up, from the communities up, to say, look, we need to be able to project and figure out what our budget's going to be. So I will certainly be doing that, and I ask for your cooperation in that as well. One quick kind of announcement, highlight. Obviously, we passed the FY19 budget before the end of formal session. We still had a supplemental budget, or some people refer to it as a closeout budget. Weren't too sure if that was going to be able to have the political pressure to actually get done, you know, in an informal session. It did. The Senate and the House came to an agreement on that. We got that to the governor's desk, and he announced today a significant increase in Chapter 90 funding, which is great, especially for the community of Mansfield. Just kind of back on the napkin figures, I think we got, it would be about $148,000, I think.
Yeah, about $150,000.
Yeah, almost $150,000 in additional funding for Chapter 90. The idea being that a lot of us were putting pressure on the administration, and they certainly prioritize this as well, making sure that we had, you know, any communities that had shovel-ready projects for the spring, that we were able to get the funding now so that we weren't chasing that. You could actually plan. The people in the communities could figure out what the priorities were. You guys know better than the legislature and the administration what needs to be done in town. So for roadwork, transportation, project improvements, that sort of thing. So that was announced today, the extra $40 million. In the FY19 budget, I'm sure you're well aware, because you advocated for it, Representative Barrows and I were able to work through both the House and the Senate for a $25,000 air market to take a look at the police station for a feasibility study on the senior center. You know, again, we have limited funds that can go out to the district, but Rep. Barrows and I were able to work that through, so it didn't become a contentious issue in conference committee. So that was a good win for the community as well. Outside of that, Mr. Chairperson, members of the board, we have, you know, continuing to have office hours. I encourage anybody, whether it's a local official, people in the community, to come and raise issues with me. As you know, 7,000 bills roughly filed in the legislature every year. There is no way that I can fit 7,000 pieces of information in my head. I rely on you and the administrators and the schools to come up and say, this is important to us. Can you help get this done? With the -- I know we have folks from the schools here. This year, one of my priorities was to get done a foundation budget review bill, which would essentially start to close that gap from the Chapter 70 funding, which is, you know, between $1 and $2 billion based on certain reports. That was a priority for us in the Senate. We got a great bill done. The House had some difficulty in passing such sweeping legislation, and at the end of the day, we weren't able to get anything over the finish line. But that is definitely a priority for us. That Chapter 70 funding bill hasn't been touched since I was a sophomore in high school in 1993. So it's, I say, it's almost a crime that we couldn't get that done this year, but at least next year, we're hitting the ground running, not starting from scratch. We have, you know, the conference committee, I think, had great intentions and tried to get it done, but that's important to the communities. The last piece on that is the special education circuit breaker, which I've heard from a lot of people here in Mansfield. The legislature, unfortunately, in the previous budget, did not live up to the promised amount of the 75% funding in the circuit breaker. Special education costs being what they are, we wanted to make sure that we funded that fully. Correspondents want an amendment to do that in FY18. It didn't pass, but FY19, we're at least living up to that, to that 75% that was promised from the legislature. So that should take some of the pressure off the community of Mansfield.
Senator, just a quick thing. You had said that you -- where do you do your office hours in Mansfield? I'm just curious.
We mix them up, so we usually announce them in the next couple of weeks. I'll announce November, December. We're usually at their library, at the Council on Aging. We try and do them at different times for people that work different shifts and stuff like that.
I'm not sure, but just a friendly suggestion.
Yep.
Men want to have you staff, our cable access people will run it on their scroll.
Absolutely. Great, yeah, we'll do that.
If you reach out to Jack O'Neil.
Yep.
He'd be happy to run your office hours on the Mansfield Cable Access scroll, so you guys have something to do.
Perfect.
Awesome.
Love it.
But anyway, and again, Senator, thank you for coming.
Of course.
And I know you're not going to be able to stay for the whole meeting, but I just want to thank you for coming. In my old and new business, we had the ribbon cutting for the DPW.
Yes.
And I know you have, I think, nine cities and towns you're dealing with.
Nine towns, yeah.
So, you know, coming out on a Saturday, I know we all appreciate your time, so thank you, sir, for that.
No, I appreciate it. It was a great event, and like I said that day, you know, the investment from the community and the people of Mansfield, I think, is on great display. And then the, you know, the new public safety building that looks great, and we'll be cutting the ribbon on that soon. So a lot of good things happened, and I know you work hard, and the residents of Mansfield should be proud in the investments that they're making.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Kevin, what's the -- how are you going to handle the next part of this?
So I thought just to be able to start off, and Senator, thank you for being here with us tonight, to be able to listen to us and continue to be the good partner that you are. And we're also joined certainly by Director Stamberg this evening. We certainly have our school committee here this evening, finance committee here this evening, certainly Superintendent Murphy with Ed Donahue. And we're happy to be able to kick off this process of the fiscal 2020 budget. I want to thank the work that John has done in initial assumptions and expenses and budget variables, and he's going to be talking about here tonight. But I think it's also important to recap, just as the Senator has, in the cooperation for all town departments, really in that vision, the philosophy of one town, one budget, formulating the fiscal 2019 budget and where we are today, projecting and benchmarking where we said we were going to be, and we're at the levels that we had anticipated, which is fantastic, which also serves as a base where we're going for fiscal 2020. And to be able to go through that tonight, that I wanted to be able to have John go over some of the revenue expectations, whether they're being conservative, moderate, or aggressive, and the same thing also on the expenditure side. And I thought that that would be a nice way to be able to go through and to start off the discussion here tonight, and then also certainly hear from FinCom, and also hear from our school committee this evening. So at this time, I'd like to be able to hand it over to Director Stamberg.
Wherever you're more comfortable, John. That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. I just wanted to start off with the fiscal year 20 budget discussion is, we have to start somewhere. And what I did on the sheet that I sent out to everybody was, I started with the plan that we've used in the past of a conservative approach, a moderate approach, and an aggressive approach. And we've tried to stay in the moderate approach over most of the, mostly years, we've used this three-pronged approach. And there, again, revenue is what's constrained in town budgeting. Expenditures could go on forever. Revenue is a finite limit. So it's the assumptions on the revenue that mean a lot. Based on those assumptions on revenue, then we can figure out what our expenses are. So usually, there are five revenue assumptions that we go over every year. New growth, state aid, local receipts, indirect costs, and any free cash usage in the budget. This year, there won't be any free cash usage in the budget. Mr. Dumas has already kind of made that very clear. So there's only four revenue assumptions that we need to talk about, and we can go over them one by one if you like. And on new growth, I had a conservative amount of the fiscal year 18 amount, a moderate amount of somewhere in the middle of where fiscal year 19 was, is for an aggressive amount. So again, I'm picking a number. It's fluid. I have no, you know, no hard numbers to go by. It's just a starting point to stimulate the discussion.
But, John, you should tell them that that moderate number's been pretty accurate over the last three or four years.
Have been extremely accurate, yes, but that doesn't mean that it'll be.
I know, but I'm just saying, on aggregation, your numbers are pretty accurate. Give yourself some credit.
Pressure, John.
Thank you. No, I mean, they could be -- there could be a variance.
Yeah, I mean, you have a know, but the trend on it's been good.
The point I'm making is that number, the numbers that John's picking and using are realistic numbers. They're not, you know, each is constrained or overestimations.
Thank you. So the new growth number is somewhere between conservative and aggressive, and it's at 975,000. On the state aid, the initial thinking that I have is somewhere between our conservative of fiscal year 19 amount, and then that's the moderate would be a 0.75% increase on our FY19 amount, and an aggressive would be a 1% increase. And I'm hoping, now that we have our senator here, maybe he can do a little bit better there, but.
If I may, can I just jump in real quick? I don't mean, that's, you know, my 11th, 12th year on the board, and every year, when the budget process, it's always easy, I don't want to use the word easier, but it's easier to budget the expenses, because, you know, 80% are salaries and insurance, and it's contractual, and we kind of know where we're going to be, and the wild card is the state aid all the time. And it's like, you know, you're waiting, it's like, what's going on? Oh, the governor's numbers are out, and it's kind of like, okay, we'll get it, we'll get it, then like, now what do we do? You know what I mean? So I don't know if there's anything, I know it's early, you just finished the last year, but are you seeing anything in Boston yet for next year? Or have it, you know, like, they have the revenue consensus meetings, right, and all that?
Yeah, yeah. They'll do the consensus meeting fairly early on in the session. I will just to be completely pragmatic about this. You know, there are leadership changes in the Senate side, as well as houseways and means, so that tends to, I think, historically, kind of gum up the works a little bit. There's enough pressure, I think, from my colleagues, you know, because of the work that you're doing, that, you know, we need to come up with projections early on. that, you know, we need to come up with, with projections early on. We were able to do that last year. They, they came in a lot quicker last year than in previous years. So we'll continue to advocate for that. But there, you know, with new leadership, it, it may be difficult to, to do that.
Has there been any thoughts about reducing unfunded mandates or funding them, or reducing rules and regulations that are put upon the town without any way to pay for them? Because, you know, that, that, those are some of the areas where if you can't give us any more money.
Right.
But you relieve us of some, you know, some of the different ones for the schools and for the town.
Yeah.
That's just like giving us money?
Yeah. No, every, every year, there's, you know, there's, there's discussion on the unfunded mandates. I mean, obviously, you know, when we talk about education costs especially, um, you know, we, statutorily, um, we cannot, you know, pass on an unfunded mandate. Um, you know, we had a civics discussion this year where we talked about mandating civics in schools, which is a great idea. Uh, but how do you do that if you're not gonna provide any more resources? We have early voting that's going on right now in cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth. It's a significant cost for, for clerks. Um, we need to be able to make sure that, you know, we're providing the resources to be able to do that. So, yeah, every year, it seems that we have that discussion. It, I think we nibble on the edges sometimes on that and we, we keep on passing mandates.
So do they consider it, do they consider it funded if they're funding 25% of it? Or, like, like, I consider it funded if you, if you make me do something and it's a dollar and you give me a dollar, I consider that funded?
Right. No, I, look, I mean, it's a discussion, I think, for every individual issue that comes up, whether it's on the school side or it's on, you know, operation side or whatever.
But are there other people, like, you know, there are other senators and, and are there other people?
All the time. It's al, always a part of the debate.
So where does the pushback come from?
Well, I think, you know, I mean, you have advocates, you have people in the community that advocate for certain things and say, you know, this is important to us. And, you know, maybe on the, on the expense side in the community, we're not able to, um, you know, fully fund it, but we think it's something that's important to do. We hear about it, you know, it gets debated and, and it gets voted on. I, I will tell you that every issue that comes up that has to do with passing a cost onto a city and town, there is robust debate about whether or not it's an unfunded mandate. Uh, and you'll find that there are more and more of my colleagues, including myself, um, that if it becomes an expense for a city and town that can't cover it, you know, we're not gonna pass it. So, it's not, it's not a one-size-fits-all. There are some communities that, you know, are okay with certain things and others that aren't. You know, it's 200 legislators trying to bring their own frame of reference and represent their own communities. But ultimately, that discussion is held every single time we have a debate on a bill.
Okay, John, I'm sorry to cut you. No, that's okay. Um, so again, local receipts, um, I use the, for conservative amount, the, what we have in the FY19 budget, moderate was a 3% increase, aggressive was a 4% increase. So again, moderate would be 3%. And in the corresponding sheet, that's the number I used. And again, indirect costs, uh, similarly, FY19 budget is a conservative. Uh, indirect costs are, are, um, costs that are born in the general fund but are, um, are related to the enterprise funds that we have in town: sewer, water, airport, parking. Um, so those enterprise funds reimburse the general fund for those costs. And it's things like accounting, treasurer, collector activities, things like that, things that are done on the general fund, but they're, are related to sewer billing, waters, uh, water billing and things like that. Um, so in the scenario that I came up with for, for a starting point for discussion, for fiscal year 20, the, we have a, um, a maximum allowable levy of 67.3 million, which would be a 6% increase over what we have right now in fiscal year 19. And again, that's partly because of, um, the third round of, of borrowing related to the municipal complex on East Street will come on sometime in fiscal year 20. And so, um, the, you know, the, the total increase over la, over FY19 would be 6% in the levy. Um, again, I have cherry sheet receipts of 0.75. Um, local receipts up 3% over last year, um, 2% increase in, in indirect costs, and, um, enough money to put into the stabilization fund to keep us at our, our goal of 5% of the operating budget. Um, so that would be a total of 99 million, 99.3 million dollars, or a total of a 2.99% increase to, of all revenue.
So we're a $100 million business?
Yes.
Not counting some of the enterprise.
General fund only, yes. Um, on the expense side, uh, I, I used, you know, round numbers to start the discussion. Salaries would be, uh, um, up 3%, expenses up 2%, capital outlays would be up 3%. Um, a 5% increase in our, uh, regional assessment of southeastern regional school district. Um, again, with the schools and the, uh, the personal services or their salaries would be up 3%, uh, and expenses would be up 2%. The debt services as, as we have it now, as we, you know.
As you know.
As what we know, that may change depending on how things go. Um, cherry sheet assessments, I've got a 3% increase over last, over last year in as a, um, as a starting point.
Is that including the T?
That includes the T, yes.
Talk about that later.
Okay.
Before the Senator leaves.
Uh, insurance, I have a 3% increase for insurance and I have a 5% increase in for employee benefits. So, um, again, with those, all of those beginning assumptions, that would be a balanced budget.
Okay, good.
Ready for any questions?
Excellent.
Do we have any questions at this point, or do we have more presentation material?
So I'd like to also be, at this time, to be able to recognize the school committee. Would you have anything that you'd like to be able to add at this point for our school needs as we're starting to look towards fiscal 2020?
Well, sure. Um, there's a few things out there. One, there's a, uh, there's a new accountability system from the state regarding MCAS, which means that we will need to be, you know, directing resources to, uh, certain populations of students, um, in order to maintain the accountability levels that I think the community's expecting. Um, special ed, I just wanted to remind everybody last year that we were very fortunate in that our outplacement, um, uh, budget figures were significantly lower than the year before. I, you know, have done this for a number of years. I would not anticipate that happening again. And I think that that was a lucky break in the budget this past year. So we need to, to keep that in mind. Um, uh, two years ago, I think it was, that we approved creating that stabilization account for special ed. Um, and I don't think we've even addressed the policies or process about how we would fund it or how we would get money out. So I think that's just kind of out there, something that, um, the boards need to just keep in mind. Um, we have contracts that are, are going to be up, so we're entering negotiations for a number of the units this year. Um, and also to follow up on the insurance amount. Um, I know that we had the insurance task force last year and that it had made a number of recommendations, and I'm not quite sure where we are on that.
And with the insurance, was that a two-year deal, or is that?
Yeah, it's a two-year locked-in rate, and then we'll see what the experience produces.
So is, is someone in the spring gonna start looking at next year's?
Indeed.
Okay.
So, we already began discussions with them. We have the July numbers in, which were good claim numbers so far just for the first month of July. Because of incur, but not reported, there were several months thereafter lag claims that come in. Um, we're gonna be evaluating that, the claims on a monthly basis. We'll be meeting with them quarterly of what I've asked of Maya, who is now our, we've transferred over from SMHG over to Maya, um, and being able to be able to look at it quarterly. And then also the fact that for, it'll be between 4 and 6% that we're looking at an increase for fiscal 2020. If our claims experience continues the way that they are now and into the next year, um, we could possibly look at a level funded increase if it, the claims were to stay as the way that they are, which would be for fiscal 2021, which would be a nice break. Um, but we're gonna continue to be able to monitor that moving forward.
That's a big number.
I'm sorry?
That's a big number, the health insurance.
It, it absolutely is.
After salaries, that's it.
And I just, sorry to follow up on Walter's comment about the unfunded mandates. I, I appreciate the discussions going on at the state level, but again, you know, just recently, last week I think it was, you know, a very well-intentioned law was signed about screening for dyslexia, uh, with students in the school district. And it's, you know, clearly, there's a need for that type of service to be provided. But again, there was no funding allocated for that. So it's just this continual expectation at the state level, um, for the schools to be able to do, uh, the work they're expected to do, but the funding is not coming through. So the foundation budget discussion is really critical.
Right.
I mean, there must be mandates out there that are irrelevant at this point, you know, because people always put stuff in and never take stuff out. So it'd be good if somebody could, I know there's probably thousands of them, right? Maybe tens of thousands of them, you know, because every legislature likes to put their name on something, put it through. Um, it'd be great if some, and I'm not saying, I'm saying, but it'd be great if some task force looked at that and said, hey, here's a bucket of them that we can just get rid of, but we can shift that money over to these other ones where we're funding nothing or funding 25% or 50%, and now we can fund 25% more, 30% more. Because there have to be buckets, if irrelevant ones, or ones that, you know, don't make sense because they were written 20 years ago. And, and maybe there's, maybe they're bundled up in something else, but we're required to, to do both of them or three things instead of really do one more efficiently. I mean, anything, and I, and I know it's putting a lot on, I mean, 100 to 200, I know it's tough. I'm just kind of venting a little too, because we always sit here and we look at the budget.
Yeah.
We sit with the school committee, you know, you, you get the steps, the lanes, the raises, you run through everything John talks about, you look at the revenue increases, and we're already starting in the hole, right? Um, and then these unfunded mandates roll down and you look at the stuff and, you know, and it's, it's, it's difficult. I mean, we've, we as a town are in a very good financial shape. Sometimes we get penalized for that. And I understand that there are towns that are more needy than us, but sometimes I think we get overly penalized because we keep the house in order. Um, and not to say that we should, you know, get more money over other people, but, you know, maybe some of the towns that are good fiscally can be rewarded every once in a while with, with, with something. Or maybe we could be relieved of some, of the unfunded mandates, um, that, that are put forth, whether it's through the city, city or through the schools.
Uh, just a couple of things on that. And I, trust me, I get it. And it's, I, I appreciate the venting. As somebody who was a, you know, on the Board of Select Presidents in Foxborough, just up the road, I, I get it, right? I mean, you know, you're, you're dealing, as soon as you start these discussions, you're already, like you said, in the hole and there's only so much revenue that you can raise and your receipts are only going up so much. So I get it. Uh, you know, it's, it's one of those things that, over the years, and I, I think they are well-intentioned, as you said, you know, the dyslexia bill was certainly one of those. They came from advocates, from people in this community and others throughout the district, that said, you know, this is important to us. We need this screening. Um, and those have been happening, you know, those types of bills have been happening for decades. As far as looking at, you know, what doesn't fit anymore and maybe something that you could, uh, get rid of, I agree. And I think that's part of, you know, what we should be doing to keep, uh, the state legislature accountable and local government to say, you know, what is it? What is it that you need? But we rely on, on people advocating for that, you know, uh, for, for you to come forward and say, hey, look, this is our experience. You know, this is something that's a mandate on us. It's an unnecessary expense. You know, it doesn't work or it doesn't fit our community. Let me know that. And, and, you know, I know Rep. Arrows feels the same way and we will certainly go up and try and advocate to, to fix it. Um, but if it's not on the, on the, on the tip of our tongues, if we don't know about it, then it's tough for us to advocate. So, so I always say, if there is something that, that, you know, needs to be adjusted, let us know. We'll certainly bring that. I'll file legislation. I'll stand up on the floor of the Senate and make sure that we address that. Um, I think it is, you know, it's a tangled web after all these years of so many, so many mandates being passed down. I get the difficulties. The, the fund, the foundation budget review bill, I think, would have been a great fix to it. Um, first off, to actually update the formula, you know, when that formula was first instituted, they, the idea was that it was gonna be adjusted every couple of years, that they were gonna look at it and they could, you know, address the rising, uh, insurance and healthcare costs in schools. They could address the rising costs of, of special education, um, to, to more accurately reflect what the cost was to a, a community. The fact that it hasn't been touched, I think, is, is wrong. This year when we passed the bill in the Senate, that was part of it. You know, let's look at this. Let's look at this every year and adjust. And then to change that wealth formula, you gotta remember, we are unfortunately in an urban-dominated legislature. And I have no qualms with my colleagues advocating for their districts. That's what they're sent there to do. But I think sometimes we need to be able to be bold and to stand up and say, look, you know, if we're looking at the ability to pay, and I say that in quotes, because I think a lot of times, their view of what a town's ability to pay is, is different than our experience here, um, in this district, you know, we have to be realistic about that, right? My district goes from, from Medfield, you know, right down 95 to Seekonk and Rehoboth, you know, three kind of very distinct and unique, um, parts of this district. Um, every town is different, every town is unique, but that foundation budget review bill would have adjusted towards that. It wouldn't have been perfect. There wouldn't have been a windfall for a community like Mansfield. But at least we would have been able to get our foot in the door to say, let's look at this every year and start to adjust it so that a community like Mansfield and the other eight cities and towns in my district could actually benefit from it. So, so I need you helping continuing to advocate for that next year.
Just send you up to the State House.
Please, please, start knocking doors.
If there was a bucket, we're gonna send you up there.
I could be calm, a little field trip.
Did you have any que, other questions for the Senator?
Um, I just had one. I think there was a, uh, some funding grants or something, safety, school safety grants.
Yes.
That were just kind of signed recently.
Yeah.
Do you know the specifics about that, or?
I do not. I can, I will have my staff research that and get you all that information.
Okay.
Um, there is, there is a lot of talk, especially, um, you know, with new school construction. So people that have taken advantage, um, you know, of, of grants and stuff from the state on new school funding, there is talk, again, a potential mandate, we're not there yet, but there are discussions, um, because of the, you know, atmosphere that we have in our schools these days of mandating some sort of, you know, shot spotter, right? So that if there was the unthinkable that happened in a school, that the police department would actually be connected and can find out, you know, where shots were in the certain, in certain parts of the building. Um, you know, a, all sorts of school security measures from the way that, uh, we install the doors, to the way they lock down, to what the configuration of classrooms are and, you know, places for, for kids to be. So, um, those discussions are ongoing. It's kind of a hot button issue up in the legislature. There was, you know, a, a pile of bills filed regarding that. Um, but, you know, we'll get the, we'll get the information on the grants. And then I would just say, stay tuned, because I think next year, there's gonna be a lot of discussion about, you know, how we start to retrofit schools for, for safety issues.
Okay, thank you.
I think if, if that's, it's the same grant that you're referencing, that may be through EOPS. And I know that they've reached out and have been in contact with Lieutenant Bane, um, and the PD, and they've been in contact and some discussions have started with the school department as well. I think it's the same group of funding that's recently new.
And let me know too, certainly if, if it's something that the, that the community decides to apply for, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt to have myself and the representatives, you know, send a letter and start to shake the trees a little bit. So let us know.
Okay.
So I think, moving forward, uh, we're gonna be starting, even though we're in the middle of updating and refreshing our whole new CIP process with all of our town departments and meeting shortly with the CIPC. Um, in addition, of course, we're talking about tax classification this evening. We'll be kicking off and challenging departments to think, of course, before we request, we reduce and realign wherever possible, number one. And number two, ask to say, what do you think your number one goals are? Your number one needs for fiscal 2020? And we can start to have that dialogue and that discussion. And that helps us to be able to start to build and get ready for, while we're not gonna be ready, um, with a final, final budget for January 1st, 2019, I think that we'll be in a much more different place than we were a year ago when I, when I first arrived with you. Because we've formed the basis of the relationships with all the departments. And when we meet and we're sharing a multitude of projects together, uh, we can be able to clearly identify for you where we're focusing, where the number one things are, and what we think what that means for the schools, what that means for particular departments across town. Um, and we'll be starting that process relatively soon. Are you excited, John? And we'll be there with everybody soon.
Let the good times roll.
Let the good times roll for sure. Um, and that way we can come out with, you know, here's our baseline and here are the things that we'd like to try to achieve across the town and all of our municipal departments here in Mansfield.
Great. I mean, just, just not to throw a damper on it, but again, you know, we haven't really done a good job in business development and bringing it, you know, getting the industrial park, you know, the densities up and what we had talked about before. Now we've seen, you know, hotel and Starbucks and stuff move into Foxborough. Um, we've seen New England Ice Cream and a big parts supplier move over into Norton. Um, we might be getting a hotel, but not because we brought them here, just because a real estate agent was lucky enough to drop it, to drop it here for us. Um, but again, we do not have a cohesive business development strategy on attracting business to the, to Mansfield. Um, we've talked about that for the last three, four, or five years. Um, everything from who owns all the buildings? Are we in contact with all the real estate? Um, head of real estate for all those owners? Uh, do they know that they can, uh, change the densities of the building? Uh, who do we want in town? Who do we want a market to bring in town? What should it look like? I mean, just those basic questions. Um, you know, and I, and I think you, you can see the towns around us have been extremely successful at doing that. We had hoped at this point that we'd have an extra between 500 and 750,000 dollars in tax revenue based on the changing of the, um, of the zoning that we had done, I guess, five years ago, five or six years ago, Scott?
Five years, yeah.
Five, yeah. Um, so that's still, you know, even though with the finance committee, we try to also take a look on business development. I don't know if it means we need to get with the IDC, with the town manager, whatever, but, um, I'm concerned that we're at the top of the economic cycle, of coming into that top of the cone, which means that, you know, the next three to five years, you know, it might be more difficult to get businesses to come to town. So, um, or they may not be expanding at the rate they were before. I really think, again, I know I sound like a broken record, and I probably will when we talk about the tax split, um, and when I do the presentation at town meeting, but, at some point, we really have to focus on it. Because again, you know, it's not really an expense problem at, at a point. The, the, the schools in the town do a very good job at controlling, you know, controllable expenses. It really is, if we wanna add additions to staff or we wanna upgrade it, we're gonna have to drive additional revenue in the town. And I know it's not easy, um, but, but I, I do think that we've, we've reached the point that at some point, we have to do something. Because if the economy turns and the revenue goes down, then the expenses, we've already, we've already got a delta when we start.
Expenses aren't gonna down.
It's just worse when it goes, no, no, you know what I mean, though, in other words. So, I feel better now. Thank you.
So not that I was ready to dive into this this evening, but since you brought this topic up, Walter, I think it's a good opportunity to, just to let you know that I have been having discussions with the IDC. And, um, I've been keeping the board updated as we've been moving through. And some discussions that we've been having about business development, the looking at the opportunities of how we market Mansfield, the type of materials that we can use, in addition to creating some type of a position. I'm not ready to say what that position is, uh, whether it's a, I wouldn't necessarily call it an Economic Development Director position. Um, if, one of the things that I think where we haven't been successful in the past is when we've created a department-level position and only have one person without having any type of resources to be behind him or her, causes a situation where they're not gonna necessarily be their best. So we may be looking at some type of a mix where we could possibly have a, a marketing firm to assist that person with the necessary extra skills and talents to be able to help attract, um, different types of opportunities to be able to come here to Mansfield in addition to helping build what we've already got.
I know we haven't voted it, but we've voted it in the past. We would support that. We would, I mean, we've, we've been begging for the last couple of years for someone to hire a marketing firm and to specifically target what we wanna bring, we wanna bring to town. So I know that the finance committee would be very supportive of, of, of that.
So know that, that we, we started discussions with that, with the IDC, and probably, I would say, the last four, five weeks.
Five, nine, so.
We've been, we've been starting to, to work on that. We've interviewed one firm already. Uh, we just had a second firm in, I think, uh, last week that came in. Um, so just to be able to at least give you a little, uh, background on that. That's one of the things we're kind of targeting as one of our goals for fiscal 20 as well.
Mr. Chairman, for you?
Yes, sir.
I just, just to follow up on that too, um, you know, obviously, since getting into this job a year ago, realized awfully quickly that any growth that happens in any community has a regional impact, right? So, um, I've tried to take kind of a big picture, uh, look at it and really, you know, work with the administration. We're lucky, Secretary of Economic Development, Jay Ash, I think really understands, as does the Baker administration, how important it is, uh, to look outside of the 128 belt and the 495 belt and, um, to grow in places that, you know, desire it. Um, Secretary Ash, I know we've had him down here a couple of times. He goes, goes back with our town manager and, and many of you. And, um, so it's on his radar screen, it's on my radar screen. However, we can be helpful. We just did a big, uh, economic, uh, development bill, uh, right at the end of the session. Um, I think in the Senate, it was some, somewhere around 661 million dollars. Um, it got watered down a little bit, but it was a significant investment into the Mass Works program. So the communities like Mansfield could say, hey, look, this is what we wanna do. Once you get that, you know, first couple of steps down the road, this is what we wanna do. We need your help, Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, in, you know, building out the infrastructure. This is what we need to be successful. So, um, we did make an investment into that program this year. And, you know, certainly as we progress as a community, um, you know, let us know and we will continue to have the Secretary of Economic Development engaged in that process.
So, so Mr. Senator, um, you've seen a lot of the communities. You've been a Foxborough select board member?
Mm-hmm.
Select Board member. I got that right. Um, and I look at our growth over the past 10 years, and we've been less than 1% eight out of the 10 years. If you take out the personal property, and in fact, what's on John's forecast here, 975,000 out of a $65 million levy limit is far less than 1% growth if you take out personal property. What are we doing differently that other communities aren't? You know, um, you, you see all these other communities, you've been actively involved with them. I always said before, why don't we get the ice cream shops?
Right.
Why don't we get the Starbucks?
Yeah, I think, I mean, it, there's no one size fits all. I mean, when you look at, at, at my district, there are some communities that, you know, are actively seeking growth, like Mansfield, and having difficulties. And then there's others that just say, look, that's not part of our plan right now. I mean, we have, you know, in Sharon, for instance, in the northern part of our district here in the Bristol Norfolk, they have very little commercial development. Um, they've been working on the, on a single plan for the last 10 years on the, you know, right off of 95 on the Foxborough border. Um, you know, that's, that's legitimately the past decade of work trying to go into just that one development. Uh, you look down in the southern part of this district, down in, in Rehoboth, and there's kind of a reluctance to do a lot of, you know, a lot of, uh, growth and economic development. You know, here in kind of the sweet spot of the region, Foxborough, Mansfield, Norton, Attleboro, where we're all competing, you know, all the different communities are competing to, to bring folks in. Everybody's, you know, trying to do what they can to provide tips and to, and to offer an incentive. But it really comes down to what is the community's master plan? What is the town's master plan? Where is the development gonna go? What can we offer as far as infrastructure and incentives and, and that sort of thing? Uh, and then just being aggressive and, and, you know, suiting, um, developers, which is one of the things that we saw on the Foxborough Mansfield line with that Starbucks property up in, uh, in, you know, the old plaza there. You know, that was, that was the town manager and the, you know, board of select persons and, and others in town, just, you know, finding the right fit, um, and then actively going after it. You're doing that work here? I just think there's, it's a roller coaster. It's, you know, sometimes we're flush with, with, uh, with people wanting to move into town, other times you're, you're struggling. But, I mean, I see it, I get it. I know that, you know, it's a priority for Mansfield. Um, I don't, the area sells itself, the town sells itself. It's a great community. I think people would be crazy not to move here.
Well, if it sold itself, we wouldn't have less than 1% growth. So we're doing, we're missing something here.
There is, no, and I think there's a big marketing aspect to that, right? I mean, when we look at, especially, you know, ju, just to kind of speak parochially about, you know, what I know about, when we talk about like biotech, you know, we're looking at, um, life sciences, that, you know, people that ran out of space in Cambridge, it's all, you know, a little expensive in Cambridge, they wanna come down, you know, you got the incubator down here. You, you have to go out and market to that, right? You have to be at those biotech conferences. You have to be available. You have to have somebody from the community who's gonna go and, and create these relationships and, and sell the community. Um, I, I think Mansfield's doing the right thing. You know, it's just, I think you're at that point where it's, you know, it's getting frustrating, 'cause you don't see the fruits of your labor yet. But, um, certainly somebody dedicated to doing that job is a, you know, I've seen a lot of success in that with other, with other towns.
You know, I've seen other towns who use the selectmen, the selectmen actively market, the town manager actively markets, the IDC actively markets, you know, and I think we've, you know, I think if, regardless of whether you hire somebody, um, it might just be a shift of focus.
Yep.
You know what I mean? 'Cause it's easy to get bogged down in the day-to-day, you know, accepting the streets and doing all that stuff. Um, you know, we have a lot of people in town who work at major corporations. If the selectman ever said, you know, I wanna hold a meeting, can we get people who work at Fidelity, these, you know, different companies? You, I think you may be surprised about how many meeting, people you get to a meeting, you might be, be surprised at how many people wanna help you, you know, 'cause they live here and they like it. So just simple, simple things like that. Um, so, I appreciate that. I, I agree with what you said, and, and I, I struggle too, because I sit there, I look at what the square foot cost is in Boston.
Right.
Everyone moves out. We have the train, we have 95, 495, we have great schools, you know, safe town. Um, and for some reason, you know, they go to Franklin, they go to Hopkinton, they go, they go somewhere else, you know, and, um, and I know that other towns, I know for a fact, because we've had, um, businesses come in front of us and say they're actively marketing, getting marketed by other towns.
Right.
We don't affect, we don't, we don't do that at all, actually. So that's, I mean, that's a huge, and it's not a criticism, Kevin, it's just, it's long before you got here. Um, so, and it can't, it can't all be the town manager either.
No, absolutely not. No, it, it's not, you know.
It's a little, no, it's a little piece of everything. It's, it's, it should be 50% of the board of selectmen's time. It should be 100% of the IDC's time. If you have an economic development coordinator, they would be the general laying out the plan and using all the pieces on the, on the, uh, on the board, you know?
And put it on us too, put it on the legislators. I mean, we, you know, like I said, I just mentioned, you know, um, life sciences and biotech. I mean, that, we are in front of a lot of different audiences throughout the Commonwealth. Um, it should be on the tip of, of our tongue and on the front of our minds constantly to say, hey, look, you know, we have a community that's, that's willing to, that you're willing to invest, and just set up those meetings.
Gets back to what you talk about. Do we want biotech? Do we want?
Right, I just use that as an example.
No, no, but my point is the town has to, we have to have a plan.
That's right, yeah.
Because we can't just, one day it can't be biotech, the next day it's trucking, the day after that it's something else. It's gotta be, what do you, what top one or two or three industries do you want to bring to the industrial park?
Absolutely, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. So, John, have you finished your presentation piece?
Yes.
Has Kevin completed his?
I am, thank you.
You have a presentation for the tax hearing, right?
I, I do.
Okay, and?
I answer the tax.
Almost. Um, you have any other questions?
I don't.
Are there any other general questions for anybody? Any other comments on this? I think it's an excellent start. I'm glad that everybody's coming together again, like I said earlier, at this point. Um, Senator, again, uh, we really appreciate you, uh,
Thank you.
Spending the time. And I know it's sometimes the difficult questions, but you're not afraid to sit here and answer them.
That is the job.
So we really appreciate it, and, uh, you know, I know Kevin, uh, Kevin, with all the Kevin's work, you know, as much as we can really reach out to you, you, your office, Rep. Barrows and Rep. Poirier and Rep. Kafka's office, whatever you can do to help us, 'cause, you know, we wanna do, we wanna do it right. But, you know, the more information we have, the quicker we can get the information, we can help do our jobs a lot easier, so.
Chairman, we have a, a great delegation, great legislative delegation here. It's bipartisan. We work together. Um, but I do wanna mention, your town manager, Kevin, is, is always, you know, on top of things advocating, uh, calling us. We have a, a regular meeting, uh, where we get together and just kind of discuss a lot of local issues and how we can be effective legislators. I hear from, you know, from the members of this board constantly, so, uh, you know, it's a partnership. It's, we're all in this thing together that questions get difficult, but that's fine, because we're all trying to figure out the right solution for the town. So, I appreciate the opportunity and, and all the work that you do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for the next topic? Select Board, almost?
We have a couple of, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Folks from the School Committee, thank
you very much.
Thank you for having me.
We appreciate all your hard work. Um, and just for the folks at home.
Thank you, everybody.
We have to wait a couple of minutes for the, um, the next, the next here, the next issue is the, um, the, the tax classification hearing, which is always a fun-filled event. Our folks back there have done it several times. Most of them have done it several times.
We can do it.
You wanna blast through the warrants, gentlemen?
Can I just ask a?
Do you mind doing that first?
Sure.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Which members are the capital, people that are on the Capital Improvement Committee?
It is Frank and Mike.
Frank and Mike, go ahead, Steve.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Town Payroll, Town Medicaid Payroll, 19016PT, the amount of $395,672.47.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, I abstain, 301.
I move to approve Town Deductions Vendor Payroll, 19016TV, in the amount of $120,130.14.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 40.
I move to approve School Payroll, School Medicaid Payroll, 19016PS, in the amount of $1,666,064.73.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
40.
I move to approve School Deductions Vendor Payroll, 1916SV, in the amount of $535,877.67.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 40.
I move to approve Town Payroll, Town Medicaid Payroll, 1907PT, in the amount of $386,962.27.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain, 301.
I move to approve Town Deductions Vendor Payroll, 19017TV, in the amount of $113,275.57, totaling $2,917.98.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 40.
Just shy of $3 million, right there.
What's that?
Just shy of $3 million.
Nice. Are we at 7:30 yet?
Some change.
We are at 7:28.
Okay, so that's done. Could you go through the correspondence real quick, or the proclamation?
I'll go through a few of them. How, proclamation was part of the consent, right?
You're correct.
Okay.
As for correspondence, we can blow real quick.
Sure. We've got, um, first things first, members of the Select Board from Sherry H. Gernon, Director of the Mansfield Parks and Rec, uh, dated today, annual Halloween parade. So this is for you who are, um, planning to parade on Saturday. The status of the recreation Halloween costume parade will be confirmed Saturday at noon. Please check back with us on Facebook or call the office 508-851-6458 for event confirmation at that time. It is forecasted to have heavy rain with predicted wind gusts, which will likely unfortunately cancel the day's festivities, so.
Stay tuned.
Use your costume for another time, I guess.
Have an indoor location. They just cancel it?
Right, they just cancel it. That was supposed to be the inaugural George Dantino costume prize as well. Um, got a note from Xfinity here, uh, to the Board of Selectmen or the Select Board, um, giving us the name of an individual for a point of contact for Comcast.
Okay, we don't have to read all of that.
Catherine Maloney is the name, and there's a number if you would like it.
Yep.
Um, Fayos, a letter from Fayos cancelling Stadium HD, Channel 820, which I actually watched game six of the 1986 World Series on just the other night, so. Not that I wanna bring up that memory. And just a couple more ones. Um, Boston County Agricultural High School.
Bristol County.
Bristol County, sorry. Um, letter sending our communities serves as notification of a change in our tuition billing procedure, and I presume John has the information on this. If not, I will air mail this to you now.
Okay. With that being said, Steve, let's open up the public hearing, please.
In accordance with Massachusetts law, Chapter 40, Section 56, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Mans, excuse me, the Select Board of the Town of Mansfield, Massachusetts will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 24, 2018, at 7:30 PM in Room 3A.B., Mansfield Town Hall, 6th Park Row, Mansfield, Mass. The purpose of the hearing is to adopt the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year 2019. And, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the public hearing, or move to open the public hearing.
We have a second, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, none. Motion carries. The public hearing is open. Just for the folks at home, the purpose of this is to set the, um, we discussed, we actually, it's really not saying the rate, it's really discussing on the, uh, the split, right? The, of the, of the tax rate, um, whether we have a split between the residential, commercial, whether we have a single rate, and actually, the actual rate itself, I hate to use the word plug, it becomes a plug based upon the way we decide to move forward. Is that correct?
That is indeed correct.
Um, that being said, we are gonna, we're gonna have the full discussion with the Board of Assessors and the Assistant Assessor, and we will not be voting tonight on that. Michael's not here, so, um, is that gonna affect your stuff to do?
No, he's not only here, uh.
As for questioning and stuff?
If, if there's a question by the board.
Would you like to join us up here, or is Walter doing a presentation, or who's starting this party off?
John starts.
I was gonna start with, uh.
Nice.
Ready to go there, but.
Well, welcome, just before you start.
I don't know if the assessors wanna add something to start.
One of the assessors starts.
Maybe they should.
Um, two years in a row. I know we, I ask you every year, but if you could introduce yourselves.
We're going to, yes, sir. And, uh, like, to introduce ourselves, I'm Greg McCallahan, as the Chairman of the Board of Assessors.
Thank you, Greg.
I'm Dana St. James. I'm the Clerk of the Board of Assessors.
And I'm Nancy Hinode. I'm the Assistant Assessor.
Thank you. That was a fast year, huh? We're back again, huh? Um, did you want them to make, make their presentation, or what was the plan?
I believe the Financial Director, John has a PowerPoint he can present that has all the numbers that would be pertinent.
And then if there's any questions, we can ask you guys.
Sure.
Excellent. John, you are on, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. So, um, again, this is gonna be a very high-level stuff. It's not gonna be down in the weeds. Um, it's, we can, although we can have other discussions later on. Um, so for the, for the PowerPoint here, so the fiscal, the tax rate basis of what we're talking about tonight, um, it's the, where does the, you know, what's the, why are we doing this? We had some spending at last May's annual town meeting, and this is a small amount of upcoming November special town meeting that's gonna be coming from the tax rate. Um, the values that are used to determine the tax rate are the taxable values of each property in town as of January 1st of 2018. And again, the, the, we're limited under Proposition Two and a Half to how much the town can, can tax. Um, the maximum allowable levy is the amount that we can tax people in the town and, uh, businesses, residents, personal property, commercial and industrial. Um, it looks like it's a difficult calculation, but it really isn't. It's only five steps. It's, you take last year's levy limit, you add 2.5% to last year's levy limit, you add new growth, that becomes this year's levy limit, then you add any debt exclusions to that, and that is the total maximum allowable levy for the town. Um, so last year's levy limit is the first part, is the starting point for the levy limit. Um, it doesn't matter that if we didn't tax right to the, to the limit last year, uh, the levy limit stays and continues on after. So if we didn't use all the money from last year, you can still use it in the current year and go going forward. So the fiscal, it stays at a base. So fiscal year 19 amount is 60.1 million. We then add 2.5% to that amount, or 1.5 million, I'm gonna round the numbers off so we can get rolling. So, um, then the next component of the maximum allowable levy is the new growth. But, um, it's, in very general terms, it's new development. That's not the result of a revaluation. Um, and that's added to the levy limit. So the fiscal year 90, uh, 19 amount, um, is 1.07 million. Um, and then on top of that, we add debt exclusions. What's a debt exclusion? It's a vote by the, uh, at the ballot box to increase the maximum allowable levy to pay debt service for a specific project. It's not a permanent increase to maximum allowable levy in the sense that once the debt for the particular thing is gone, then this comes off the taxes. So, uh, the town's taxes, um, the ability for the town to tax. So fiscal year 19's amount is 658,000. Um, all of the debt exclusions have, are going to be coming off, um, this year, and we actually have a negative debt exclusion. And, um, again, I skipped one year, but, um, the, this is a one-time year, yes, a one-time thing. So with the DPW Public Safety Complex, there, there were three phases to the borrowing. We've already done Phase 1 and 2. The first phase was $7.8 million. The second phase was $20 million. Phase 3 will be going on in fiscal year 20. I talked a little bit about that when we talked about the FY20 budget, um, earlier. So, 27 point...
So that line, so that line 3 is gonna start going way up.
It is going to increase in fiscal year 20, yes.
And, and the credit we're getting this year is about a million bucks from the high school and the middle school development 20 years ago.
Yes.
Or 21 years ago at this point. So, right, it's a credit. So our tax burden is a million bucks lower right now. Next year, it'll be a million higher, 'cause that'll be gone, plus.
Plus the increase.
A few hundred thousand, I think it was, for the increase in.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so this year, we have a one-time reduction related to the, uh, the MSBA is the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Uh, again, they, this is the 20th year of the payback on the schools that were built 20 years ago with debt exclusions. The state gave us a little bit more money, and, um, because they gave us more money, well, they're supposed to, the state payments are supposed to be matching our actual debt payment, and this is the last year, and they don't match. The state actually gave us more money, so that means that we can't tax that amount. And this year, we have a 978,000.
$969,21. Nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, twenty-one dollars.
Nine hundred and seventy thousand dollar credit, because this is the end of that, of that. So you take last year's levy limit, which is sixty point one million, two and a half percent of last year's levy limit is one point five, you have the new growth this year of one point zero million, the levy limit then will be sixty, sixty-two point seven million, you have the debt exclusions, which is one point six, that's the phase one and phase two of the East Street DPW complex. The total maximum allowable levy that we can raise on taxes is sixty-three point four one two. So that's a two point six two percent increase over fiscal year eighteen. If we, a lot of questions I get asked is, well, what would happen if we, if the DPW Public Safety Complex was not on, on the tax rate? This would be a one-time year where our taxes would have actually gone down, point oh one, and it's only a one-time.
You gotta be careful, the gross would have gone down.
Yes.
Individually, depending upon the evaluations.
And that's, and that's a, that's a good, no, it's a good thing to say, Mr. Chairperson, because when I'm giving these percentages, this in no way means that, it's not each individual person, and I think that's on my slide, on my slides here. So, in fact, it's on the next one. This doesn't mean that everyone's tax increase is going to be two point six two percent. It's just the total levy increase of everyone is going up there. Yours may fluctuate up or down. So right now, what we're talking about tonight, the reason why we're having the meeting, is the tax rate, tax classification, rate shift. So right now, last year's was at one point two seven. What does that mean? That means commercial, industrial, personal property taxpayers pay twenty-seven percent more than if Mansfield had a uniform tax rate. A uniform tax rate in the sense that they tax all property the same, the same amount. Residential taxpayers' bills are reduced by the amount that equals to that twenty-seven percent. So residentials, taxpayers pay less than the uniform tax rate. Commercials, industrial, and personal property taxpayers pay more in, with this split, or when we do split. So again, fiscal year eighteen's rate shift is one point two seven. If you want, if the rate goes down, the rate shift goes down, you move it more towards what would be a uniform tax rate, or one, and if you want to go higher, if you want residential to pay less, commercial, industrial, personal property to pay more, you go higher when one point five is the max. So each percentage, each, each percent of moving up or down has different effects on the tax rate, depending on whether, what type of tax, what type of property you have that is subject to tax. So, I mean, that was it, I kind of ran through it quickly, but I try to keep it simple so we can talk about the important things, Neil, and I'm here for any questions.
So, I guess, do you open up to my colleagues first for John, or you want?
Why don't I, I can just, let me piggyback on him, because a lot of the things cross over, yeah.
This is Walter Wilk, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
So what we did is, we provided a, the Board of Selectmen, where does our tax dollars go? And we put a dollar bill up there, and I think it's gonna pop up on the screen. So we talked about businesses already paying twenty-seven percent more. Sixty-five percent of every dollar goes to education, and you can see the breakdown on the sheet that I handed out to you. One of the things that's interesting is business already pays a proportionally higher amount, even if it was a, even if it was a blended rate, because then they really don't use the education system. You know, if they live in town, then they pay it through the taxes of their house, but education, so when you look at raising the rates, you really, they're really being penalized more than twenty-seven percent. Going back to my earlier conversation, I see the Board of Selectmen at many occasion when you're electric light commissioners, taking credit for having cheap electricity, but I think that the one point two seven and the fact the education number offsets that. So I think we're kind of kidding ourselves. The, I think when you look at the total cost of moving to Mansfield, if you're a business, the cheap electricity is a very good reason to move, but I think when you do the math on the taxes, you're paying twenty-seven percent more, which John pointed out, and sixty-five percent of every dollar is education. So if you think about it, they're actually probably paying at a one point eight rate versus one point two seven. Plus, they also pay personal property tax on equipment and other, other things inside the buildings. I got the definitions on the next page. I did a quick, we did a quick regional comparison for you on the following page. I know you guys always ask for what other towns do. I, I think it's relevant, irrelevant at the same time. I mean, it's good to have a benchmark, but there are so many other things that float in and out of these numbers that, that either impact or don't impact rates, but you do see some towns do have a, some towns do have a single rate. Some of the things that you can't see in here are TIFs and other incentives that they give to industrial customers. Some of these other towns are extremely aggressive at doing that. Then you have the regional tax growth comparison, and you can see where we are compared to other towns, which actually, we're at the lower end of where other towns are. You know, last year, when we, when we had this conversation, you know, we thought about it as a finance committee and came back, and we said, you know, what, what should we have probably said to you? Because I know we've had this conversation a couple of years, and every year, we lose the argument, and the tax split continues to go up. So, you know, how does it, you know, when you make these decisions, I understand that people in town, nobody wants to see their taxes go up, whether you're a business or an individual, I don't want to see my taxes go up. But running business out of town or not attracting business to town, as John said, for next year is gonna have a significant impact on the budget, so you pay one way or the other. But the selectmen should ask themselves, what is the impact of the split rate on, on the business tax in Mansfield, and how is it gonna drive business? How does it, you know, we know that we don't have a goal, but the question would be, how does this help us achieve our goal? You know, what's the ideal rate? I don't know what the ideal rate is. What influence, what factors influence the tax revenue? You know, why would people move here? Why would people leave here? And what information do you rely upon to make the, an informed decision? I, I know in the past, we've talked about different things, like TIFs, or giving abatements to elderly individuals, or exemptions and things like that, and, you know, we've talked about it before, but if you want to, we really, what we really are missing is a, is a town-wide consistent tax policy that needs to be done off-cycle. You know, one of the things that the finance committee's done over the last seven years in the financial area, you know, with, with John's help, is putting together policies and procedures, and that's helped us. What should the stabilization fund look like? You know, what should OPEC be funded with? You know, when, when looking at, at how much we should spend in different areas, I think in taxes, I think we're a town, we're a hundred million dollar business, as, as Selectman Appelwitz said a little while ago, we need to have a, really a plan, versus just coming in and, hey, one point two eight sounds good, or one point two six sounds good. What, why, why are we at one point two seven? We're at one point two seven because someone threw out one point three two last year, we're like one point two two, and one point two seven was the number we landed on. We didn't say, boy, one point two seven, that's gonna drive business to town, but at the same time, it's gonna help keep the people's rates the same. So our recommendation as a finance committee is that the Board of Selectmen, along with other, you know, town manager, finance director, assessors office, put together, you know, in the spring, a townwide tax policy that you guys can have as a compass to say, why are we raising the rate, and why, or maybe we should be lowering the rate, and, and, you know, taking everything into account for that. We do, as a finance committee, we do want, and would recommend this year, that, this is the year, because I'm sure you've all seen that the residential rate, for single-family residential is one point oh nine, and the business rate's going up on average, you know, thirteen point eight one. If any year was gonna be the year that reversed, you know, from one point two seven to one point two five and one point two four, this would be the year that we would reverse it, and it may bring, you know, dropping it to one point two, two six, huh?
Yeah, no, I know, but going to, going to one point two six would bring it to one point four two, and it would bring the thirteen point eight down to twelve point eight. I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but it is, you know, it would at least be a gesture that we're trying to keep business in town and drive additional businesses to town.
Okay. Excellent. What I, actually, I appreciate the chart you did, the regional tax growth comparison, because I've always said, the actual rate isn't really matter, it's what's the average tax bill. Who cares what the rate is? It's really, what am I paying? So I appreciate that, Walter. I would, is there a chance that on these, on this chart, we could take a look at all the abutting, so like, could we add, say, Sharon and Easton to this?
Uh, we pulled this information.
Just because they're all abutting. You see this chart he did?
Yeah, you have, you have tax rates.
Any town that kind of touches Mansfield?
I have fiscal, I have fiscal eighteen tax rates.
No, but he did the average tax bill?
Well, in order to do that, you have to have the value.
Right, so that's, yeah.
What I'm saying is, though, if we have these other towns.
So you're raising. But you heard, you heard what the Senator said, that there are certain towns like Sharon that don't want business, there are other towns that, you know.
I just think to make a, to make a truly transparent analysis, we should show all the abutting.
Sharon has a single tax rate.
I know that, but.
Mr. Chairman, can I just comment, since I put this together? The information comes from two sources. Plainville does a really good analysis, so that's where the original idea came from.
Yep.
I also used, and Chairman Davakio knows this well, the state has its resources available. I just didn't have time to pull everything, and they don't have it, but we can start bringing in the Sharon and the others, if we, if we have enough time to do it.
But what's, but what's. But I like the fact that we're doing this, because this is, I think, important.
And they only have up to seventeen, they don't have eighteen.
But one of the things is, if you, if it's just all the bordering towns, if you tell us what other peer towns, we could try those, put it, so the list reflects what you guys think are, are peers. Is it just literally the ones we touch on, or is it the ones we compete with as well?
Probably both, it's probably a combination of things. And it's not like we, it's just to give people a frame of reference.
Right.
I think.
Yes, I agree.
I mean, I think Easton, Sharon are, I mean, Sharon does have a big industrial population, industrial piece, but Easton might be a similar town, similar type of, you know.
I did look.
Logistics and stuff like that, so.
But the Department of Revenue only goes up to seventeen.
Again, I'm not finding, I think it's great. I'm just throwing out some ideas.
Well, it's important, because this is what the average family is paying for their services in town, regardless of the value of their home. This is what they're paying.
Right.
Can you, regardless of the tax split, is there a way to get a similar type of chart that shows what the neighboring towns are doing with their tax splits?
Well, that's what, these have, the, the ones that are split are on here, and the ones that aren't split, say, single rate, it's on there, if you flip the page.
I don't wanna do math, just give me the numbers.
He wants to know what their split is.
But in the ends.
Are they at one three, or they at one?
Is it, the average?
Oh, I see what you're saying, right.
So you're saying Mansfield's one two seven here, so what would Walpole be? It's about the same.
What it basically comes down to, right, is, is if someone wants to move here, if someone, you know, a business is here, right, let's, let's focus on business for a second. If a business is here, they're focused on the cost of the property, square footage cost, insurance cost by square foot, electricity by square foot, and taxes by square foot. So that's everything that goes into their calculation, you know, in order to do it. You know, information is great. I, I think we're, you're kind of losing some of the focus is the fact that we got one point two seven, and sixty-five percent of our tax dollar goes to education. So one point two seven, they're actually paying double, at least, if not triple, more than one point two seven. So, you know, in order to do, if, if sixty's five.
As you're saying, they don't have any benefit from the schools?
They don't have any benefit from the schools.
Is your argument that if you don't use a particular service, you're being overtaxed, because there are services I don't use?
Right.
No, the, the, no, the, the, no, the argument is, is the argument is, if it was at a dollar, and it was, if it was basically a, a single rate, and they were, they were using it, it wouldn't be an issue, right? My point is, you're not using it, plus you're getting hit twenty-seven percent more. So I think everyone's cool with, hey, I'm paying a dollar, you're paying a dollar, I'm paying a dollar twenty-seven, and on top of that, I'm not using the biggest driver of the tax dollar. So it's almost like a double whammy is the point that I'm making.
Is that unusual to have a percentage for education?
No, education's up there, fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five, that's not, that's not.
So all towns have that issue?
They all do, but so what I'm saying, but with the split, it, it.
All towns don't have the same services.
Okay, correct.
If I could add a point on this.
Take a deep breath.
For discussion, because I think it's interesting, it's not so much about what each municipality has as their percentage split between residential slash commercial or industrial. It has to do in the end, based upon what you're actually paying.
Correct.
Because the values in each municipality are gonna be different. So the commercial industrial value in Easton is gonna be different than the commercial industrial value in Mansfield.
Correct.
So we, we can't look and say, everyone around us is at one point two, or at one point three. It's really not the discussion, because, but we're looking truly here, what's happening on a year-to-day basis, based upon the information that the assessors and Nancy have provided to us, is based upon the fiscal two thousand and nineteen assessed value. Based upon the sales that happen, and you, please correct me if I'm wrong, but based upon the sales analysis that happens here in Mansfield, determines the change of the assessed value for all what falls into residential, what falls into commercial, and what falls into industrial. The benefit of this discussion of what we have here, I think, is twofold. One, you get to be able to look at the, the peaks and the valleys. If we were literally at the same point as where we were a year ago, and there were any changes in the value for residential, and there were any changes in commercial industrial, I think pretty much, it's a very easy discussion to probably say, we stay exactly the same. But what we find here for fiscal two thousand and nineteen, because of data and because of sales that have happened, if we stayed exactly where we are. At one point two seven percent, with business paying twenty-seven percent more, what you find under the industrial sector is that specifically industrial is gonna go up eleven point one seven percent, while your average single-family residential only goes up one point oh nine. So when we're looking at, and I, and I think it's an important, this is where the second factor comes in, when we talk about trying to recruit business to come to Mansfield, when we talk about wanting people to stay here, we have to look at when we're the sixth, second largest industrial business park in the state of Massachusetts, how does that balance and that ebb and flow work? And what we have as a tool is the opportunity to look at how this rate is set, and how that balances out between residential versus commercial industrial. So I think, Walter, to your point, it's important to look at when there's a smaller increase on the residential side, to this impact of staying at a one point two seven, when we look at industrial going up eleven point one seven percent, that's a huge issue, especially when you may not use all of the services as an, and if you're not exempt from personal property tax, you're paying an additional tax on top of paying twenty-seven percent more.
Yes.
So I think that that's an important point for us to really kind of dive in and to talk about, and what the recommendations would be for a suggestion, moving into fiscal nineteen to set the split, in order to try to make it as less painful on industrial.
In as fair as possible.
In as fair as possible, I think is maybe the easiest way to say that.
I wanna open it to Frank.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think this latest discussion was well put, and thank you, Kevin, for bringing that up. You've been on the board more than the rest of us put together, but I think my experience over the last four cycles has been, the, the discussion is centered around trying to keep the actual impact, rather than the, the ratio the same. So, you know, there's been some arguments, we should, we should help out residential a little more, we should help out business a little more, but I think that, insofar as there is any policy goal, it was try to make sure that the impact is smooth from year to year. Whether we've achieved that, you know, we've come close, but we haven't always exactly been there. I look, I look at these questions, and I see, what policy goals do the, does the select board seek to achieve by adjusting the current split tax rate? The underlying question is, is what impact does adjusting the split tax rate actually have? I mean, if you, you look at some of the, the general research, it, it says that, you know, tax rates are not that important a factor for, for business location, but we haven't done the research on that. I, I agree, we have not done that research, and that would be interesting. I think it's the perfect type of thing for us to not charge, but request the finance committee, maybe take a lead role on, if we sit together, maybe a couple of the leaders of the committees sit together, and come up with an approach to doing that, that would be excellent. But I don't think we should just assume that if we go to a dollar tax rate, businesses are gonna swarm in. There are a lot of other factors that are involved. As Selectman Schoenfeld has pointed out, whatever the factors are involved, we're not hitting them on all cylinders, and as Walter has pointed out, so.
Just to point out, you, you can get to one point five, that's the highest you can go, without getting the state legislature to give you some type of dispensation.
We don't want to do that.
No, no, but the point is, at one, at some point, if you get to point one point five, then if it's being used just to artificially play with the numbers, it ends at some point, because, you know, you go from one point two seven to one point three two to one point three two.
You can't blow the balloon up anymore.
And then eventually it stops. So the piper does come home at some point.
But in the current context, as Kevin was pointing out, the impact is gonna be greater on, on industrial.
Huge this year.
So that the ratio would be shifted lower, not higher.
Correct.
Yeah, you're right, at some point, the numbers are gonna, what's the, what's the official term, Steve, ridiculous, but.
I, I also do think, I agree with what Frank said, but I think also, we have to, you know, we talk about policies, how we're gonna do things. We all, we already know that the next year coming is gonna be big.
Should be five, probably five or six percent?
We need to take that into account, while we're setting this split too, because you don't wanna, like, we talked about trying to keep things, not to be like a roller coaster.
Right, but if, but if both are gonna go up levels, five to six percent next year, versus having this outproportionate thing, that's, that's different than, as Frank said, having, excuse me, Selectman Davakio said, is, is having a huge increase one year.
And, I just, I'll let Frank wrap up. Let me just complete, the, I think the other interesting information that we may get from the, the assessors tonight is, you know, there is, there is a change in valuation, you know, the increases or decreases in valuation between class, between classes, between residential and commercial and industrial, personal property, you know, there have been shifts, but, you know, how do those shifts come about? What, what do they reflect? Do they reflect a general decrease in, in commercial valuations, were there particular things that happened in town to particular industry, to particular businesses that impacted that, you know? What caused that? Is it, is it, is it stuff that really matters, or is it, is it a statistical anomaly, or, or things of that sort? And if any further discussion of statistical anomalies will be handled by Selectman Schoenfeld, but that's, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Select person, Davakio. Select person, I know you.
No, no, I'm fine. I love these unanswered tax questions, and I think we ought to take a look at them. Just a couple of things to point out there is, we have changed the split three times in the past ten years, three times in your tenure, and then all, the policy, it seems like we have by default, is to change it to kind of even things out between the, the various classes of residential, commercial, industrial, not really personal property. And there's an awful lot of volatility in those assessments over the ten years, in the commercial industrial categories, especially the industrial category. The industrial category has been up fourteen percent and down ten percent in various parts of those years. It just goes all over the place. Yeah, there are only, what, a hundred and eleven industrial properties out there, thereabouts. In fact, when you look at the numbers since fiscal year ten, we have almost the exact same number of properties. Seven thousand five hundred and sixty-two, now it's seven thousand five hundred and eighty-eight. Absolute stagnation, if you will. So what causes our.
Lot's a lot. They might put a house on it, but a lot's a lot, right?
Agreed, a lot's a lot.
They're built out.
A part of the, a part of cabot's a part of cabot, that's kind of it. There's not much to, to, to blow out, you're right. And ninety-five percent of that, of course, is, is residential, as, as you would imagine. So a lot of the. So, a lot of the policymaking that we do here with these tax rates is just really to deal with the assessments, to deal with the volatility of assessments in industrial and in commercial, because as we say, we don't want to pain any particular category more than another. That is a policy. Is it a good policy? Possibly not. But I think it's something that needs to be examined from time to time. So, when I look at that, when I look at this, whether you're a resident or whether you're industrial or a commercial business owner, you want predictability. You want to know that your tax rate's not going to go up 14% one year and down 2% the next year, or not your tax, your tax. You know, so we've, we've got residential value that has gone from 75% to 78% over that time. I mean, like I said before, we have anemic growth over the last 10 years, and that's what we're kind of getting stuck with. But for me, the biggest issue I see is the average residential value of the last nine years has gone up 20%. The average business value in the last 10 years, 12%. So, why? That's a, that's a fundamental question. Why have the residential values gone up 20%, but are business and industrial have gone up 12?
The market.
The market? Is it?
What else is there? Frank?
I don't know. I was, I was going to ask Selectman Schoenfeld, you know, he characterizes growth as anemic, but, you know, on an absolute basis, you know, these are very small numbers, and growth is very, is, is, is not large, but how is it relative to other communities? That's an issue.
Good question.
And what, and what, you know, what are the factors that, that create that? Has there been a sector of the industrial community or the commercial community that's been hit hard, and their values went down, and others have gone up? We really need to look at it more.
I mean, what, what happened is real estate-
You said this before, Frank, you said that tax policy doesn't necessarily the driver of whether businesses come here or not. I might paraphrase you there, but I think that was the impression.
Right, but that doesn't mean we should neglect it.
Agreed, agreed. So, if we can have more consistency year over year, maybe that's something they look to.
Do you, you really believe that tax policy doesn't drive where business goes?
I'm sorry?
Do you really believe that tax policy doesn't drive where business goes?
Intuitively, no, but if you read some of the academic-
So, Ireland, the Cayman Islands, I could name five or six countries where people, you know, reverse the, where they're, even though they're based in the US, they have their tax domicile overseas. And I know it's, it's different numbers, but my point is, if somebody can go into Foxborough or into Easton, which, because she, because the argument always is, people make the argument that tax doesn't drive it because you're looking for educational level workforce and all those things, but if you're only moving to the borders on both sides, you're really, you're really drawing from the same circle, you know, the same 25, 30, 40, 50 miles. So, if somebody goes into Easton, or somebody goes into Foxborough, you're drawing from that same, that same circle. It's different when, like you said, it might not make a difference if somebody wants to come to Massachusetts, so it picks Virginia. Obviously, it's, you know, different, different economies, different cultures, different workforces, but I disagree. I mean, there's a reason that Norton's put in new industrial buildings, and there's a reason that Foxborough's done a lot more development. I understand Foxborough's an anomaly because it has Robert Kraft, and he does a great job at helping to bring businesses to town, along with the board of Selectmen and the town manager, but I really think, you know, I, we've been talking about this for a while, and at some point, when the economy turns, I know John hears it from you all the time, that X and Y axis are going to cross, and, you know, I'm just, this is, as Kevin had said, articulate, he articulated it that I extremely well, I could never do it, is, this is, if this is, basically, this is the year, if you're going to, if you're going to make a reverse to smooth stuff out, this is the year to do it.
I look at Foxborough, and I see that they too have a significant split, and I, it's probably not a great one-to-one comparison, it's not apples-to-apples, because of Kraft's-
Involvement.
Involvement in, in Foxborough. And I'm not saying, I, I think intuitively, obviously, the lower taxes the business has to pay, that's got to be attractive, but the actual impact, I mean, we, this is, we're looking at this philosophically as opposed to like, you know, on a factual basis. There's got to be some kind of analysis we can do that will tell us, you know, what's the breaking point? You know, maybe a, a single tax rate isn't necessary, maybe a 110 or 115 to be perfectly palatable, assuming that we want to do that.
But isn't this kind of-
Some of the benefit, the, the argument usually is benefit of having commercial entities in town is because they don't, and this is the theory, they don't, they're on as much of a burden on the, on the, on resources as residences are.
Steve?
So, just two questions, I'll, and I'll close with my part, if that's okay. I'm really concerned about next year, John, and so we really need some advice on what to do to the tax rate this year that could help reduce the impact of next year. Next year being the loss of a million-dollar savings in the debt exclusion. It has nothing to do with the addition, additional bonding that we're doing, that's only 300 grand. It is nothing to do with the fire station or the police station, it's the loss of a million-dollar credit that we have this year. So, I really would like some recommendation on that. Second thing I wanted to talk about is that this analysis is great, and I really enjoy the recommendations you guys provided, even the unanswered questions.
Sounds good.
But one of the things that I've been looking at, that this data is that, one reason why it's painful to see that residential's gone up 20%, but business has only gone up 12% is, do we really know what type of businesses we want in town? Do we really know, you know, the level, what's a good use of tax? What's a good tax amount? Is it a Wendy's? Is it a Benny's? Is it a bowling alley? Is it a, what is it? And so, if we wanted to continue that, I'll call it anemic growth for now, if we, if we don't look at what types of businesses make sense to the sustainable, long-term tax revenue, then we're going to see a continued departure of residential and business growth. And for me, that's the most important part. Our businesses have to grow at least as fast as our, as our residential does. So, John, I, I've looked for your advice on that.
I mean, I, just for, you know, what to do tonight, I mean, I don't think that we should, if this are, if there's a chance that you could, in the, in the, in the past, you've, you've brought more taxes onto the commercial, industrial, and personal property, and you've given the residential people a break. I mean, this is a year where you could go back one or two, give, one or two points to give the, the commercial, industrial, personal property people a little bit of a back, of a pushback, but, I mean, I, I think that we shouldn't be taxing anything any more than we absolutely have to every year. I think, I think to talk, the, what we're doing now is, in essence, and Selectperson Apewitz says this all the time, we're just settling up what we did last year. I think the time to put the, put the, the onus on is come up with a policy for next year, for fiscal year 20, and say, you know, this is, the, the large increase is coming, and what are we going to do? What are the, what are the policies and procedures we're going to take? We're going to, what's an acceptable tax levy for fiscal year 20? And you want me to tell you what that is? I don't know. That's, that's kind of, you know, what you need to talk about and come up with a policy.
The asset budget in May, we have to pay for it now.
Yes.
And people forget, every time we talk about it, they forget about that. They worry about balancing the budget, but they don't worry about, okay, how are we going to pay for it? And now it's time to pony up.
Yeah, but, but to be honest with you, are you guys ready to, to gut down and say, okay, we're going to do layoffs? Because you've got to remember, we're, we're going to the limit, because we're going to the limit to get into where we are, basically to almost keep level services, right? So, if you want to, at the end of the year, I totally agree with you, at the end of the year, if you say, if you say to the finance committee and, and the town manager, find a million dollars, we can find a million dollars, but it's going to go, it's going to be FTEs that, that we're going to go. So, I know we always get to the fall, and people say, go back and say that, you know, it's in the spring, but you've got to remember, we're taxing to the max in the spring because we don't have a lot of new growth. This year was an anomaly, we don't have a lot of new growth, we don't have a lot of new buildings coming in, or higher-density buildings coming in on the commercial side that we thought would drive growth.
I think also something to think about, and I've talked about it a few times, is every year we generate this free cash, and we talk about not using it in the budget, but maybe we look at the discal calculation, and we park some free cash into that to lower the increase in the levy.
But it's doing the same thing, though.
Yeah, you are, but you, you-
It just took us seven years or six years to get off of using free cash in the-
But it's different, because-
It's not different.
Well, hang on a minute. What I'm concerned about is, let's say we generate three, four million dollars of free cash, and then everybody's there, well, let's do this, let's do this, let's do this.
We had an anomaly this year in the free cash. We sold off lots, I mean, okay.
But we're generating two or three million every year.
Yeah, on $100 million, that's 2%, that's nothing.
So, then what do we do with it?
Instead of going out and bonding, we put it toward capital projects. So, instead of going out and bonding, we, we buy, we buy, we, we buy equipment, we do projects.
Or we go to the capital projects that we spent $35 million for and didn't put a dime, we didn't have any deposit. We paid, we financed every dime of that.
But we've paid, but you can go back over the last five or seven years and look at all the capital projects that we did with the free cash.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is that maybe we have to take a look at that whole process and say, okay, how much can the taxpayers of Mansfield afford to keep paying?
But you're making a mathematical error. If you put free cash into that, and the free cash isn't there, there's a hole, and how are you going to make that up?
I'm not saying in the budget, what I'm saying is-
No matter where you put it, if you put it to manipulate, falsely manipulate a number, you're going to leave yourself a hole. You can't put free cash in any number.
So, next year, when people's tax bills go up 6% and 10%, what do we tell them?
You're also making the, you know, the argument that you make, Selectman Apewitz, about, you know, you, you made the comment about the DPW garage and the fire department. We would have had a, the, the point you don't make is, we would have had to put money into the old fire station, the police station anyway. There's no absolutes.
That's true, but-
Correct.
Money or 35 million, that's a big difference. Foxborough builds a town hall for $7 million out of the cash. We didn't have a deposit, we built that with no down payment. People buy a house, they put 20% down.
Right, but they also get fire engines and ambulances from Kraft paid for, we have to pay for ours. I can make a thou, I, we can go back and forth all night and have this discussion.
Well, I don't know why we're arguing, I'm just saying my opinion.
Right, but, but sticking free cash in there is an error.
You don't have to agree with it, that's fine, but-
But when the free cash isn't there, how do you fill the hole?
You know what? We've had-
I don't disagree, that's a, that's a mathematical fact.
We've had a trend over, ever since I've been around, of free cash, and then I hear, oh, we've got all these things that we have to do.
Yeah, we put a lot in savings. We had, six, seven years ago, when I came on the board, we had no money in savings.
Mr. Chairman, can we bring this to a little higher level, theoretically? I was against theory before, but I'm for it now. What you're suggesting, using free cash to fund operations when there's a bump to stabilize the tax rate makes sense, if there's a plan in place and there's a realistic opportunity, you know, to do some of this stuff and, and know that we have the tax base growing.
Mm-hmm.
But if, if you're just going to throw free cash into the, into the picture without any prospect of, of budget growing, then you, all you're doing is saying in three years, we're going to be having significant cuts in the budget.
That's true. That's true.
So, it's fine as a bridge, and I, I think even Walter would agree with that. If, if there was a certain, or highly certain prospect that in three years, we're going to get this big development that was coming in, and that's going to raise the, and we could afford everything, then maybe you could use some of this free cash that's been generated, or stabilization, or whatever one-time source to smooth things out. That's what stabilization means, is for smoothing.
So, the bottom line is-
But if you don't have that, you, you're just, you're just-
That's right.
You're just prolonging the inevitable and, and, and taking a bad situation and making it worse.
So, what I'm saying is, I think Walter would agree with this, is that, well, we talk about the budgets for next year, and we come up with the balanced budget, what's the impact going to be to the residents? And we never have that discussion. That's what we have to, and I'm in.
Sure.
How's that? You agree?
I agree.
I agree with you.
That's all I'm saying, because we all, we, oh, we, you know, we work, we, everybody kills themselves trying to balance the budget, but then we talk about what's the impact going to be? Eh, worry about it now.
Well, if I could just add one piece-
Let me add on to Frank there. Selectman Delvecchio is spot on there. I mean, we need to have a plan to get out of any holes we dig, but I think we're using the wrong term. It's not free cash, it's reserves. We built reserves over the past five years to help us with the ebbs and flows and the volatility that we see. So, if John and the finance committee would recommend that there's a reserve mechanism to help minimize the impact of next year's million-dollar hit because of the debt exclusion gain we had this year, that makes sense. To talk about using free cash for budget, forget about it. I wouldn't vote for that at all. You couldn't, you couldn't explain any way that, where I would get to that point, but I know it's geography, but that's what reserves are built for, for that volatile time year over year. And that this is definitely a one-timer, wouldn't you say? We're not getting another million-dollar credit anytime soon, John?
No.
No?
So, you turn the light switches on, you get down, you short that before you turn the other switch. Next year.
Selectman Delvecchio's idea is right, though. You, you could float the money if you knew you had something locked that was coming into town, but we don't.
Which we're talking about.
We don't have a process, we don't have a pipeline of business, we don't. But in theory, if we knew that somebody had pulled plans, had filed for building permits in a broken ground, then you could, you could take the risk, it'd be, it'd be a less of a risk, it'd be a total risk now.
It's a good risk, because you have information.
But it would be a calculated risk, because you would have facts to go off of. So, what you're talking about, Selectman Delvecchio, ma, that makes sense.
And I think that's the definition of our reserve funds. To go back to-
One of our policies is moving cash or that type of thing.
Yeah, in an extreme budget situation, free cash is to be used with that.
That was envisioned.
Yeah, but, but the idea-
Back when, when we made the policies, we never thought we'd actually have the chance to do it.
I always thought we were going to use reserves sometime in my lifetime, I expected to, but they're there for it.
But the idea of the reserve, just to remind everybody, was the state's paying us 60 million, whatever, the state's giving us $40 million in aid, and we go into recession, they give us $35 million in aid.
I see.
And the idea of the reserve was to jump in, in that timeframe and kind of smooth out.
I think we all agree, maybe a little, a little bit different, but I think we all agree theoretically, like I said, we have to put it, a plan together, and like I said, we have a plan, this is how we're going to handle the budget process, this is how we're going to handle the impact thing, and we stick to that, and we, and hopefully, the process will help smooth things out over, I mean, you can't predict 10 years down the road, but you do the best you can. Go ahead.
So, Kevin, John, Walter, what are your recommendations to dealing with next year's 6%? Do we do something this year to the split so that next year, if, if things work out exactly as we have today, like Kevin said earlier, if the assessments are the exact level they are next year relative to one another, everyone's getting a 6% raise? Increase, not raise, increase in their taxes.
Not everyone, the, the pool will go up 6%.
But, but that's what I'm saying, if-
Stick with that, it could be 10.
No, and, um, what, what the town manager said earlier was that if everyone had the same increase relative to one another-
That's true, the percentage-
Then everyone's getting a 6% increase. And that's not going to happen, of course, but that's still a pretty high number.
It might be two, or something, it could be eight.
So, is there something we can do this year with the split to help ease that next year, especially on residence?
I'm in.
Or do we say this year you get 1% and be prepared for 6% next year?
That's a good question.
The Finance Committee recommended dropping a 1.25, and that brings the, that John has it in front of him, that brings the residential up to like 2.7 or 2.8. It brings the business down to like 9%, which is still a huge, a huge spread.
Better than 13, whoever it was before.
Right. And at that point, the, the single-family residential would be 1.76 on average.
That's fair.
And the industrial would be 9.41. So it still keeps it under 2% for your single-family average tax bill. Can I just add something to this?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Because I think that this is an important point, that I know that John understands, the town department heads and FinCom can understand. Within the existing framework of what makes up a proposed fiscal 2020 level service budget of almost 100 million, right? There are existing holes and gaps across the board. And we would be negligent if we didn't say to people that we have to address issues in a multitude of town departments because we're deficient. We're not there yet, which creates the challenge even more on the 6%. Because I still have the same pool that we've dealing with of available dollars, right, for fiscal 2020, but we still have deficiencies.
That's fine.
And I think that's important, that we recognize that, especially if we start to get down the road of possibly using or entertaining an idea of reserves. We're not there yet. And it's important that we recognize that. It's, I don't want people to wear rose-colored glasses. We have challenges. And we're going to talk about those as we build fiscal 20 that can then yield to say, what other things can you do, or maybe spread that out a little bit. But we do have to identify that our, our departments are not there yet.
That has to be out there.
Absolutely.
So people of Mansfield understand.
Fair enough. Absolutely.
What happens is, there's always, there's always a group of people that, even if you raise the taxes a half a percent, taxes are going up. They're never happy.
Correct.
Right? And then you got other people that, like, they're willing to pay their fair share, knowing they're getting a quality service.
Right.
So you have to balance that.
Agreed.
Okay? You're never going to make everybody happy, right? But as long as they know the whole picture and what their money's going for, they make the decision. They go to the town meeting, they say yea or nay. That's it.
Right.
Right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, one of the things we didn't talk about during the budget discussion was, we used to talk about five-year plans. You know, we have a great one that came from the Fire Department recently, to add staff, and they got a grant to pay for it, and even the overtime's going to offset that in the next five years. If we had that for all the different departments, and knew what was coming down the pike, and we can figure out, oh, maybe we can defer that to the next year.
I think the only issue with that, Steve, is when the biggest part of the budget is salaries. And that's the biggest, correct me if I'm wrong, Walter, the wild card on increases, non-increases, that's the whole budget right there, because-
Sarien healthcare take up a huge chunk. Sarien healthcare take up-
That's 80% of the budget.
It's more important to tell us what FTEs you want to add in the next five years, like we done with the Fire Department and others. So I think-
Theoretically, I agree with that. It's just, that's the difficult thing. We try-
But Kevin does have multi-year plans out there.
You could do, you could do what ifs, right? You could do what if it was 2%, you know, and do the best you can.
Can do that.
And that's, like Kevin said, then you have to look at staffing issues that would even take that 6 to some other number, potentially.
And as we grow our base, and as we grow the number of housing units in town, we also have to keep in mind that that's causing extra burden on the transportation infrastructure, on police-fire response, on services from DPW plowing. Exactly. So we have-
It's all interconnected. It's a big web.
So what we're trying to do, so for example, when we're trying to look at investment that we're going to leverage to get the state, MassWorks dollars, to invest into the overlay district for the TOD, we're going to bring in additional people, which is going to be additional resources. We'd never talked about before that aspect to a great length, but our town departments now are. So we're trying to at least look at, if we're going to be doing X, Y, and Z, how do we get ready to deal with that impact of growth as well? And I think that we're looking things from a holistic level, and we're doing a better job at it. But again, we're not there yet. But I think we're doing the right things and taking the right steps.
This is a good conversation. I look forward to it every year.
We love it. I know.
Thank you. I do.
We haven't really had, I would like to, did you-
Well, we've been going for 40 minutes, which is a record, I think, for this.
The Chairman of the Board of Assessors, if he has any comments. We're so happy you have attended tonight, sir. Or if any of your, and if your colleagues would like to make a comment, it's up to you, sir.
Walter, push the microphone, please.
I have nothing really to add. Walter was very-
Eloquent?
Yeah.
He always is.
The delineation of the numbers and how you arrive at it. I mean, all we basically do is put the valuations on the property, which is market-driven. So if, you know, there's a variable there, the market drives the valuations.
That's what I said earlier, market.
Which creates the variability that can change from year to year or over a several year period, as we saw in the decline of property values a number of years ago, and now we're on the rise. So it, by great percentages, not just small percentages over the past few years. So that is the variable that makes it difficult for you to do what you're doing.
Yeah. And it's always very spirited conversations we have. I think the five of us might not, we agree theoretically on most of this stuff, and we might have different ways we want to get there. But it's just, it's, it, it's hard to explain to the common person how this works. And no disrespect, you know, people say, oh, what happened to Prop 2 and 1/2? Well, it's Prop 2 and 1/2. Again, we talk about the value. And people don't care about it. They look at their bill. How much did my bill change? That's all they care about.
Well, you alluded to that earlier, about any given individual may, may see a decrease or an increase depending on the valuation of their house in that pool of property.
Yeah. See, we know it, but the average person may not understand that. And that's been my struggle, I guess, for all these years. And Walter was agreeing with me on that one. And any other questions from my colleagues?
Just a one observation. I've just been soaking in all this-
Nice.
Information, since this is my first go-around in this process. I see one of your recommendations here. I don't know if this is, was dusted off from last year, or if this is brand-new. But the thing that strikes me is it says, start tax split discussion process at least six months in advance of decision. So we obviously didn't do that.
That gets to what Sleckman, that gets to what-
Is that a new recommendation, or is that-
Well, that's what, it's basically what he's talking about. In other words, what you do in the spring has an impact of what the fall's going to look like. So if you know what the fall's going to look like, then you can start talking about the split earlier.
I agree with that, you know, I'm just saying.
I don't know when the state data come, I don't know when you guys get all the data and it all.
It's, you know, for us, it's cyclical, and, and we explain that. When you start to talk about values, you make me nervous, because, you know, under the statute, the Board of Assessors is responsible for the values, and, and it's under guidelines mandated by DOR. That's how we do our work. We don't pull it out of a hat. It's, you know, the residential is all done by analysis. Commercial-industrial is done, you know, with income and expense. Of course, we like to see sales, you know what I mean?
Right.
Which we have seen some, so we are using them. But it's important to remember that, you know, throughout, we don't even start to look at sales until July and August. So we're already, you know, several months after town meeting. And this year, we were certified early. We were certified in August, so we had all of our growth. We don't know what our growth is going to be until that point. John does a pretty good idea of guessing, but I mean, that's basically what it is.
But we can make some educated assumptions that, like, if we're voting on a budget of X at the town meeting, it's okay, the budget's going to be this. We can say, okay, the average increase is going to be within a percent or two. How that gets divvied out, I agree with you, because you don't know what the valuations are. At least gives people a feel that the overall tax increase is going up, 6%. How that gets divvied up, you might not know that. And I get that.
Especially because we're, we're still-
At least it's more information for people.
Still in an upmarket. I don't know about this year.
I understand that. But what I'm saying is that the more information people have, the more educated they are when they, when they go to the town meeting and decide if they want to approve that budget. Frank?
I was just going to say, this may be damning by faint praise, but this is the best discussion we've had, I think, in the, in the last several years, where we've got a lot of, and I apologize for my meandering argumentation. I'm not really arguing with people. I'm trying to get the, the ideas out there and trying to get my hand around stuff. I'm particularly intrigued with Sleckman Schoenfeld's assertion that our growth is anemic. It would be very useful to do the old, the old political communication task of doing comparative analysis with other communities.
Got it.
And then, then looking further and explaining what the variances. And I think that would be helpful to us.
Three years.
I think we made some progress here tonight. I think this is a breakthrough.
So I have a couple of questions. And I-
We're going to wrap this up.
I like your question, Sleckman Ryan. We should be talking about this with the town meeting, with the budget during, in May. We should be talking to residents and saying, this is what you should expect come November.
Ballpark, right.
Ballpark, right. We should definitely talk about the 6% next town meeting. In fact, when I was on the FinCom, I tried to talk about taxes. It didn't go too far. My jokes got in the way all the time, I think. But anyway, we should be talking about this at town meeting. We should be setting expectations so that it's predictable, not exact, because we can't be that good. Except for John, and his new growth is very good. But we should be talking about it. And I, I challenge us and the FinCom to do so. What I want to talk about, though, just quickly with the assessors here, is residential assessments, the average assessment, has been pretty stable over the years. You know, yes, some capes go up sometimes, some older homes go down sometimes, but over nine years, 10 years, it's pretty flat. It is not that way in commercial-industrial. And as you've seen tonight, that volatility dictates what we use for a tax split.
But that's market.
That's market. But, but the way they do, the way we do it, the way, I'm not sure if we're mandated to do it that way, but we're waiting for, like, the reason why the industrial went up big this time is because three or four years ago, there were some significant numbers of sales, significant comps that we could use. Is that correct?
No, we also had some, in the commercial, in the commercial, in the industrial, we raised the base rates on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, on six types of industrial buildings. We raised them on warehouses, R and D, warehouse office, and business in, in the industrial park.
That was based on?
Some, some sales that we've seen over the course of years.
Right, exactly. So we, we almost have to wait until the sales happen before we can reflect them. But I would ask you, next time, could you come to us at least twice a year, once just to say what's going on, and once for this hearing? Is next time we talk with you guys, that you find out whether there's some other best practices out there that maybe take comps from Foxborough or comps from other places? Because these commercial-industrial value volatility is what's driving our tax policy, and what's driving kind of the volatility that the residents feel as well, so.
I wouldn't look at another community and raise my values based on that.
I would ask you to ask the Massachusetts Association of Assessors. I've talked to them at the MMA many, many times, and there might be some better best practices out there to help smooth that volatility. Like I said at the start, whether you're a resident or you're a business, you want predictability. We're not showing any predictability right now.
That's the wild card, this whole calculation.
And I would ask that you look at some best practices.
Went up 4 bucks.
Thank you.
Neil, you all set?
Condos, commercial condos went up.
Frank, you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So at our next meeting, when Chairman Trobridge, he apologizes, he is under the weather tonight, we will vote on this. We meet in two weeks?
Two weeks.
I won't be here.
It's okay.
Seven.
You want vacation? Is that okay?
It's okay. I won't be here.
I don't think we need them.
We'll have, we'll have the information, right?
All right.
Whatever information we need, just, you know, let, make sure Kevin and John have it.
Sure.
And we'll make our decision, right? But again, again, I, I agree with what Frank, Walter, I think, you know, it's a little spirited, but I think we all have the same thought in mind. And I like that, that we did this, because, you know, people can iron out their laundry and say what they really feel. And I think we're getting to a better place. So this was a good meeting. We just didn't say, yeah, okay, don't, see you later. Okay. Thank you, Board of Assessors, for coming tonight, and keep up the good work.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walter, and thank you, Nancy, too.
Mr. Chairman, this being a public hearing, I think you might want to ask the audience if they have anything to say.
We didn't, did we open it up?
Yes, we have opened it.
Thank you. Does anybody from the audience want to make any comments about what was said tonight? That's it. Motion to close the public hearing?
No, no. We wouldn't necessarily close this public hearing. We'd like to extend the public hearing. So I move that we extend the public hearing until-
Continue till November-
Continue till November 7th at 6:30 PM?
6:30 PM would be fine.
Six, the-
As long as it happens after 6:30, we're fine.
The Pledge of Allegiance, okay.
6:30 is fine.
6:30 it is.
Is there a second? Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
4-0 motion, the hearing is extended. Okay, excellent. Okay. Special town meeting warrant articles and potential vote. Troybidge bails out of this one. Thanks.
So we're looking at the ones that we haven't discussed yet?
So I want to talk to John and Kevin. Yeah, what's the deal with that?
You had some questions at the last meeting, and you held up on some articles. I think it was the Article 6, the capital improvement plan votes, I think it was, and you, I think you wanted more information.
Me personally, or some of us?
I, I think the board did.
Okay.
I got Article 6 here. I'll go-
I'm here to talk about any of the articles, if you like, whatever you'd like to-
So we decided to not vote on that, right?
Because we don't have the numbers yet.
We didn't have the numbers. Was that the issue?
Article number 6.
So do we have the numbers?
Yes.
I, I sent it to you earlier.
Oh, yeah. A separate email.
So is the board at a point where they wanted to take a stand on those? Or you want to talk about-
No, I want, I want an actual dollar values of what's being-
He said that they gave it to us.
Okay.
I sent it to you.
Do you want to take us through that, if the Chair would allow?
If you'd like, whatever you'd like.
Just take a quick, quick gander through it.
The Capital Improvement Program Committee hasn't gone through it yet. I, Mr. Delvecchio has the book right there. I just came up with a book there. So, but this is, this hasn't been vetted at all by the CIP at all.
Should we be taking it after they look at it?
This is the night to, to post the warrants. You vote now to post the warrant. Remember that this isn't-
It's now or never for us to post it.
But this is a, this is not the vote to post. This is comments on whether we want to look to approve 615, 18, and 19, as per the agenda. The next item is to approve the warrant.
I'm sorry, I'm one off.
Okay. But if you have issues in, or you have items in 615, 18, and 19 that you want us to consider and possibly approve, we would take them. But given that you don't have numbers approved by the CIP committee, I do not want to touch item 6 until that's done.
So if that's the case, then we'd have to have a meeting before the town meeting, before the special town meeting in the cafeteria, right? We're not going to have another meet, are we going to have another chance to do this?
This vote is just to post the, the questions of the warrant.
So let's do that.
Actually post the warrant.
You want to go agenda item 8, then, so we can, okay.
So Article 6 is just a placeholder, capital improvement article, saying that there may be something related to capital improvement on the-
We should do is, we should take a motion to sign and approve the special town meeting warrant.
If you-
Well, he's got to go through the last few that we haven't.
Okay.
But 15, 18, and 19 are simply what we just voted on for the acceptance of the streets.
Streets. So we just did that.
Well, 17 is Marie Drive. I guess we accepted that.
17 and 18, Marie Drive and Dutton Drive, respectively, so.
And 19 is, I lost 19.
The, the numbers have been renumbered, from 1 through 18. And you're going to ask me what the one that got dropped was?
I don't have 19.
The old Article 14 has been gone. That was the old airport commission for the cell phone beacon tower?
Oh, yes, that's right.
So we have 14, 17, and 18 is what you're saying, not 15, 18, and 19.
Yes.
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah, 14 is Forest Heights, I believe.
Yes, the new Forest, yes.
Okay.
So we did that.
So it's just 6 that we don't have information on, so we could probably accept 14, 17, and 18.
And on all, Article 6, for this, the purpose of the warrant is to have an article on the warrant for capital improvements.
As a placeholder.
And then later on, we can talk about which ones are-
So you can make a motion to approve it as a placeholder, subject to us putting the numbers in, and then we could post the, we could post it.
Right. But I'll, I'll move that we support Articles 14, 17, and 18, because we basically just voted on it.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, 4-0. Okay.
And then I will move to approve and sign the special town meeting warrant as-
That's fine.
Given.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, 4-0.
And we'll have the numbers on the CIP on the 7th.
Now, within that, there's automatically a placeholder.
Yes.
I have the numbers. It's, they haven't looked at yet.
We're going to point to Sleckman Delvecchio and-
Well, he has a chance to go through it. I don't want to put him on the spot, and he has to go through it, right?
I just gave it to him, so there's no way he could know.
And Dr. Feely's all worked up over there, so he's going to have a chance to look at it.
We have time until November 7th to handle this and to approve it. Okay.
So basically, you, you're going to look at it, say yea or nay, and then we'll know, and then we'll go from there. But it's on, it's out there as a placeholder. Okay. So 7 and 8 are done, right, on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. SEMRECK?
Yes, number 11. In my report from last week, you noticed that I said I was pleased to announce that on Thursday, October 18th, SEMRECK signed the closing documents for the High Rock location for the amount of $10. As you may be aware, SEMRECK was also awarded a $2 million grant announcement last week. I wasn't aware that the grant announcement was going out, so I'm sorry about that. So when I found out, wanted to make sure that I wasn't aware that the, the grant announcement was going out, so I'm sorry about that. So when I found out, wanted to make sure that we did reference that. However, our next goal is to work on the additional fiscal year financial commitments from the Commonwealth that's going to aid us in gaining the necessary loan information that would be needed to fund the construction of the next phase of the High Rock facility. So there's certainly going to be more to follow on that, which won't be an issue because we have that as an outstanding item in our docket.
Okay.
Can I just ask, this building is not going to be ready for next spring, right?
That's correct.
So what, what is, what's going to happen?
So it's going to, sure, that's actually a very good question. We're going to be going over to the Foxborough location of the public safety facility, and we will be, Mansfield will join Foxborough. We'll be the first two people to go. And particularly because of the fact, we need the space and when we move into...
So we'll be at their PD?
So we'll be at their PD, and we'll have our joint facility there until High Rock is ready. When High Rock is ready, then we'll all move together.
So all the calls will be shifted to their system?
That's correct.
And everybody's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that cost us more money in any way that we don't know about, we haven't already anticipated, or?
We will be, we will be splitting the cost with Foxborough to run the Foxborough facility. So right now, we all have an assessment of $51,000 for fiscal year 2019. The four member communities will continue to pay that dollar amount, and then Foxborough and Mansfield will split the cost of what we need to run Foxborough and Mansfield's public safety aided dispatch. However, we also receive the savings on the side of not having our $900,000 cost of dispatch running here in Mansfield.
How much?
Nine hundred thousand.
How long will we anticipate having to be in Foxborough's facility?
Probably about a year and a half.
That long, huh?
If we're looking at where we're going from, the point where, where we are today, to the point where we get into High Rock, we're looking at about a year and a half.
At some point, can we get a little walk around of High Rock? I think you offered that maybe at some point, but...
They're going to go through.
I'd be curious because I hear all this about High Rock, so I'd like to go with that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Is that it, gentlemen, on that? Are you all set, Kevin?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Residents, questions, and comments? Excellent, done. We've done...
Must be a game on tonight.
We've done all that. The proclamations, do we have to talk about that, Steve?
No. Um, well, let me read them because that's the right thing to do.
We're almost done.
Okay, I will not read them in the absence of confidentiality.
Town manager's report.
Thank you. Um, that sense of discussion, I thought it was great. I, I want to thank the work that the board of the assessors, as well as Nancy and John had did to get ready for tonight's discussion on tax classification. That's taken a lot of time, and there's been internal discussion with the staff, and of course with FinCom as well. I appreciate everybody's input on that this evening. We look forward to wrapping up that discussion and a vote coming up on November 7th. We also, as notated in my report to you, is the fact that we've taken a great time, amount of time, over the summer months to be able to present our new format for capital improvement request. We've updated that. And Frank, you have yours, and Mike will certainly have his. And what we do is we first have a page that lists our capital projects, classification, and definitions. We've ranked all of our projects, and it gives a description of what is classified, of what we call urgent, what we call priority one, two, and three. And that you'll find that when you actually tab over to each department, you have a separate sheet on each sector which just, uh, explains the project, what you've got, the dollar amount, where we're proposing that it's coming from, and that's for every department that we have here in town. And so it's really a great exercise, not only for myself to really become really familiar with these projects, but also for Director Stamrock and Director Burke to actually sit through and really get the feel from all the departments of what is submitted, and to then try to take a realistic approach, to then look at, how do we fund this? And we were talking earlier tonight, certainly know there's a lot of projects, but that we were able to put in, and this is our departmental proposals, and with our support, to be able to look at, how do we take care of all the urgent items? How do we take care of all priority one? And putting them and spacing them, or our proposal is, is to do that over three meetings, which of course starts off with this upcoming meeting in November 2018 for our special fall town meeting. The next meeting, of course, annual town meeting in May. And then the third meeting would be our special fall town meeting in November 2019. And what I'm happy to report that based on this proposal, we can take care of all those urgent items, and we can also take care of all the priority ones during that timeframe that ranks across different town departments. That rank, and we'll be going through all of these, certainly with CIP, and also with all of you. And it's important that we will be discussing only with CIPC those items that are going to appear in the special fall town meeting. And they're classified in the left column, and it's notated STM November 2018. And those are the items that we're proposing that be taken up for that. So whether it's water enterprise funds, sewer enterprise fund, parking enterprise, or that it's coming from a loan order or other proposed funding source of free cash or old town articles that are out there. A lot of time went into this, and I really appreciate the fact that we took a lot of time. It was very thoughtful, and we want to make sure that we're prepared in a way that makes sense for the general public, but also makes sense for CIPC to see the due diligence has been done in everyone in the fashion that for the first time, we actually have a binder that we can reference. John Stamrock made a really good point, and I, and I can't agree more. It's a, it's a living, breathing document that really needs to be updated and refreshed every six months. Because as we're going through this, we find that if we're asking for, you know, every six months approximately going before special town meeting or annual town meeting, we're asking you for your support, CIPC, and also the members of the general public to understand what's being presented in front of them, and the needs of the departments, and what we're looking to do. And of course, some things, sometimes they change priority levels. Something could be a one, that suddenly does become an urgent matter, or vice versa, something can change and its useful life is extended, for example. And that's why John said, you know, this really is a living, breathing document. It's going to be, continue to be updated, and that we're really happy about that, and that I hope this is useful to everyone moving forward. And of course, this will also be put on our website once it's approved. And we will get this officially to all of our members and call for our meeting for Tuesday, October 30th at 6:00 PM here in 3:00 AB. So just a little update on that.
Just a quick question then. I mean, thank you. I mean, on CIP, last year, I can't tell you how many multiple copies of the same thing I had, meeting after meeting. It was at least this high, and at the end of the year, all that went into the recycle bin. Actually, I shredded it first because it's confidential information. It's, since it's a living, breathing document, is there a reason to put that living, breathing document online as well? So in case...
Yes, sure.
It's on a Sunday, and I want to take a look.
Of course.
Can we do that, one big PDF or something, or Carrie's very good at splitting the, uh, the PDF into various chapters. I have no idea how to do that. And, okay, because it would be nice, I mean, well in advance, not well in advance, but in advance of November 7th, when we're going to be talking about what's going to be on the fall town meeting. I might have a spare minute here or there to take a look. It'd be nice to see it online.
Absolutely.
Absent that, just put a copy in this room over here, and we can come down and look at it. And John, same thing with the budget. Is that something that you think this sort of documentation would be advantageous for the operating budget?
Well, we have the town manager's message. Do you want more information than that usually?
Well, I think this organization's pretty, pretty stellar. I think that might be something we might want to add to our budget process. We have multiple documents that sometimes you bring into a committee, it's, well, this is what I have, but it's, as of last hour, it's out of date now. Okay, so can we make that alive and up to date? You know, find some things you can borrow from this process into the budget process as we begin it in the coming months.
That's, one of my goals is to, you know, save some trees this year and try to get, stop the paper, paper chase, which is, it's difficult on, on my end as well.
Sure.
You know, to make sure, you know, that I'm using the right one, the newest, updated, latest one, which can look very similar to other ones.
Whether it's like a Google document thing that we can look on, on here, or something like it.
That's okay. I, I, to add to John's point, one of the things that's going to be changing over the next 12 months is that once we have the full integrated munis, munis is one of the capital items, for example, that's on here, there's a great financial component for the budget purpose that we can actually print our budget document, and be able to automatically download that and then put that up online. So if we want to be able to make sure that we're being transparent, people can see everything that they need to see, that when we're finished with our budget proposal, and it comes in a very nice, easy form, by department, by line item, very, very simple and very easy. And that'll be really nice over the next year, once we get a fully integrated system to do that at any time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Kevin.
We also mentioned the fact that we're in Article 14 has been removed, and that's because the airport commission under Mass General Law automatically has the ability to do a long-term lease for 20 years. So when we found that out from legal counsel, we asked for that to be removed. I received the final edits as approved that would be submitted this evening before we came here to this meeting tonight for the HR department, and I'm going to be including that information with Carrie for your next meeting packet to be able to read, which is a memorandum of understanding of what our goals and objectives are in order to merge both of what we were before, but to do it in a consistent approach of the consolidated HR position for the town, actually the consolidated HR department for the town. That will be sent to school committee for their next meeting, and it'll also be sent to you for your select board meeting. Also, I'm really happy to report, and I also would like to receive any feedback this evening, from our members who attended the town manager's strategic development committee last night. We have really had a meeting that was fantastic, I think, that led to, we had a visioning opportunity to look at the transit-oriented development overlay district and what we have as a vision statement for us to really continue the work that we started in this meeting. And it came up with this, the vision statement, that we envision a vibrant, sustainable, mixed-use village experience that provides connectivity to adjacent neighborhoods that's complementary to the existing downtown businesses, while bringing a harmonious design which balances the needs of residents, businesses, and commuters. Which is a really, as we're looking at all of the things and different aspects of this overlay district, it was really nice to be able to get to that point, and we did it in an hour and 57 minutes, which I thought was really good timing, especially there was something else going on last night that I think helped us a little bit too. But it was amazing just to watch all the different group members participate and give their feedback that helped us get to that last night. So I'm really happy to be able to report back on that, and we'll continue to do our good work of what we're doing for the overlay district. I'm not sure, Steve, if you wanted to give any feedback on that last night?
Sure, my word was harmonious.
I don't know, Frank, if you had any feedback about last night?
My word was...
No, it was a fun, it was a fun evening, I would say, and well worth the time spent.
No, it, it worked out, it worked very well. It was a lively discussion. I think that when people can actually see that vision statement and, and read it, I think to visualize it would make it much easier to understand because there's a lot of words there, but it, it does, it does make sense. It's broad enough to not be constrictive, but, but it does say something, so.
Great.
I'll leave it at that.
Would you like any? I also mentioned earlier this evening that we met with Maya. That was Director Stamrock, myself, the school department, in addition to Jackie and Barbara from the treasure collector's office. And our claims are really in a good space for July. Too good to be true, actually, but that was a nice first month to be able to have underneath our belt. We'll continue to review the data, as I mentioned, on a monthly basis. We'll meet with them quarterly. We will find out if for that, that's that rate lock that you were talking about earlier tonight, Steve, and that as specific as it relates to the base increase that gets voted at their annual meeting, which we'll find out in January.
Yes, in fact, we'll be able to attend that meeting and find out at that point in time at the MVA conference. So basically, the deal is, in the first renewal, we get the exact average of everyone else. Unless our experience is either, is so, so much better than that, we might get something less than the average. So that was, if it's worse than the average, no, we're not going to see that.
We're protected on the high end.
Protected on the high end. Basically, we're hedged essentially on the high end for one year. But, you know, one year, one month is not a trend. It's not even a point. It's not even a line.
That's okay.
But it's a good start, and, you know, we have some other things to look at in terms of the SH...
SMHG. That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, SMHG settlement that will take place probably in January.
Because on that topic is...
December, January.
So you guys are working on that? Well, we're waiting on...
We're waiting on that, yes. We know what, we know what to expect.
We have a ballpark in your head, right?
And we have a, we have a neighboring town that partners, that is partnering us with this endeavor. It's in the same position, basically.
Who certifies that amount? Is it, they do an audit?
An auders. So an audit report will come out finalized in December, January, then we'll look at that structure and say, a portion of that audit report is, was basically the runout, and that runout then determines what the share is.
Okay. It's like a subsequent event.
It, it is, it is. So they're actually, they have to calculate a liability for that as well. So they're already in the process of calculating liability, but the payment should be...
So a couple of months, well, hopefully we'll see...
Yeah, I would...
We'll see a little folded money coming out of them.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I believe so. And we'll have to have a discussion of, at that point in time, a good one.
Okay, go ahead, Kevin.
Just a little update, a couple of things. I already, I printed out for you this evening. The extra $40 million announcement today was a shock to all of us, really happy about that. That brings almost an additional, almost $150,000 to us. Leaves very, very happy about that because there's things that come up that we need to deal with, have those available dollars are fantastic, so we thank the Baker Leader Administration to make that available to us today. A couple of more things. Our town accountant job posting is out there. Just as a matter for any qualified candidates, please go onto our website, take a look at the opportunity for employment here in town. It will close scheduled now for Halloween on 10/31. Cover this. I have a request, and just to be able to cover, if you've noticed when you walk into the building here, we are practicing with our, having our early voting opportunity. It's begun here in Mansfield, and will run through November 2nd. That's here at Town Hall. It's in the second floor meeting room. And our extended hours for this Saturday will be 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Certainly for anyone to come down, and you can vote here, right here at Town Hall, come rain or shine, and certainly when we're open here in the building. It's available for office hours as well, but we're really excited about that opportunity. All of our staff have been very busy for all six precincts downstairs, and I thank that certainly all of our election workers.
They've had a lot of people voting.
We really have, and all the absentee ballots that are coming back that have gone out and on the way back. But we do have that early voting opportunity. The plug certainly for special fall town meeting that we're asking people to be able to join us. There are important articles in order to do budgetary transactions, capital improvement items, school, uh, school security issues that we're asking to be funded, and some loan orders, certainly for Mansfield High School and for an ambulance that we're going to be looking at. We need the towns' participation, so please mark that in your calendars for November 13th. And lastly, to be able to give a little update, we're currently on, on roadwork here in town. We're currently scheduled to pave Park Street, Park Ave and Linden Street on 10/31. And we're also having to be able to start the reclamation of Old Colony Way on 10/29, and we're looking to be out there for a couple of weeks as we install all the necessary curbing, and then get a binder cost of asphalt down, and we'll be working with everybody on some temporary relocation for parking and to make this as smooth as possible. And asked Nancy to set up a meeting with Steve Simons and the police chief just to go over that, expectations. We're disturbing a lot of, amount of people in that area, so we're going to be working with that for enforcement purposes to make sure that that's okay as well.
Just a quick question. I was parked, I parked there last night, actually. Not in the new lot because it's not striped yet. We're going to bring the wires down underneath as well. Is that this fall or is that next spring?
That's part of the whole process. We'd like to get that done for this fall.
All at once, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. God willing, with the weather, so. And that's all that I have for your report this evening. We do have one other matter of business that had came up within the last 48 hours. Is it all ready to do that now?
I'll, I'll deem that admissible in this meeting.
Okay. This was a banner request that originally came into town. Based upon the time when it came in, it wasn't available. Someone else had already taken the space, but this is space that's available from November 5th to November 15th. And the original application that was submitted was for the Mansfield Women of Today, and this is for the opportunity for them to be able to have their house tour and house tea event.
So you're looking for a motion, I guess, Mr. Town Manager, correct?
And this will be a motion to be able to have that space for the banner for the Mansfield Women of Today from November 5th to November 15th of this year 2018.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Then motion carries four zero. If you let them know, Kevin, that we've approved it, and they do whatever they got to do.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. For us, for, select board, questions and comments. How's that? Select person Del Vecchio. I'm trying, it's the first week.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While the rest of you were getting your pictures taken and ribbon cutting at the DPW, and I regret not being there, I had the opportunity to attend the annual seminar, I guess, of the Massachusetts Selectmen's Association. They call it a leadership conference, but all you had to do was be a selectman. You didn't necessarily have to be a leader, so I'm not going to make any false claims.
You are a leader.
Learned a lot there. It was very good to spend time with people from about 45 other communities in Massachusetts. Just, just a couple of, couple of thoughts. And, and I was thinking of this when we had the finance committee here and Walter up, sitting here, and the school committee, et cetera. One was, we had a board of very experienced selectmen up there, you know, giving advice, people asking them questions, and, and Paul Durensis, our town council, who's been a selectman in Sherburne for 26 or 27 years, made this observation. He says, being a selectman, you have to be really patient. Things take a long time. And I know we all have frustration all the time. I mean, a bunch of, I know Mr. Schoenfeld's been involved for a while. Mr. Abtweitz, you know, legendary is how long he's been on the board. We've, Walter's been involved like twice over, you know, a couple of decades, and, and you get very frustrated. And sometimes that frustration is well grounded because nothing's getting done. But there's a lot of stuff going that's getting done around here now. That doesn't mean we should sit on our laurels, but things are happening. The discussion tonight was excellent. I had the opportunity to sit at a table with the chairwoman of the Town of Littleton's Select Committee, and they, Select Board. And they were going to all struggle with this for a while. They have a practice. She was talking about how they get together with all their boards, and they set goals and objectives for the boards. And I was thinking about that tonight because Walter's here. We have, and I don't say this often enough, an excellent, experienced finance committee that does a lot of good stuff, and we try to do some good stuff. But when, and when we're together, we communicate, and when we see each other individually, we communicate, but we don't communicate on that basic goals and objectives level. And when Brian's, Brian Eagle's presentation on, you know, what, what are we trying to do when we, when we do the, the tax rate classification, the split, that made me, I, I really think that that's a great task for the finance committee, but we shouldn't just tell them to do that. We should have them in and, and discuss with them what, what they're looking at and what we'd like them to look at. Because looking at those bullets was helpful, but discussing it would probably be more helpful, maybe we get something done in concrete going in the future. And it all ties into, we want to do stuff months in advance, et cetera, et cetera. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Select person Schoenfeld.
I want to continue on what Selectman Del Vecchio said. I mean, he's right. We are impatient. Things are acting, but if I recall, just a few years ago, as Finance Committee Chairman, I came to this Select Board with goals and objectives set by Mr. Scott over there and others on the Finance Committee in saying, this is what we'd like to do for you this year. Now, it's a whole different board than it was four years ago. And I know we have, you know, we've accomplished a whole lot in these last seven, eight, maybe 12 years. But I think it is important that every last board establish their own goals and objectives and bring them to us, or we help them establish them as well. I think it's, I mean, I can go back to what we, we established back then. I think one of them was to educate the townspeople on the tax process. And I said I would show up at every tax hearing if I needed to, to help further educate the townspeople on, on the tax process. The, the board at the time didn't take me up on the offer. But, no, I agree with that, and I think we do have a vehicle to do that. We're required basically to meet with the chairs every month, yet we don't do that. But on to what I wanted to talk about. So the DPW building, that was fantastic. I mean, a lot of hard effort and a lot of hard years of work to get that in place, to get that passed, to get that, to demonstrate the value of it, and, you know, a few years...
to get that, to demonstrate the value of it. And, you know, a few years ago, Walter and I wrote a paper called Right Project, Right Choice, Right Time. And now we're actually seeing that take the place. You know, today's interest rates, John, are what? 100 basis points higher than they were three or four years ago? Yes. That building today, if we waited till today, would cost well over $40 million. And hopefully we have some down payment on it at this point in time. Practically, we might have had some down payment on it, but it still would have cost us a whole lot more than it is costing us right now. So, yeah, definitely right project, right choice, right time. And I thought we were supposed to reprint that article last week. What happened to that?
Sent it in.
You sent it in? We'll have to ask the press about that.
Every July 4th.
Yeah, every July 4th. But I thought we were going to print it right before our DPW open house so that the town knew it. Maybe we can, Brian and I can take a look at that and maybe update the opening paragraph or something. But that was basically a reprint of what we'd written back then. So it was a joy to be there. I touched a lot of trucks as well, even got up on the highest one I could. They wouldn't let me on top of the fire ladder.
You couldn't go rescue, you were scared.
Yes. It was a great time. Lots of kids were there. The weather turned out to be phenomenal. And it's a gorgeous building and, like I said in the past, not a Taj Mahal. I was reading this the other day and there's like four things here I wanted to take a look at. MMA seeks responses to statewide Chapter 90 survey. Did we respond to that? Is that what ended up giving us probably some 40 million bucks?
That's always forwarded to the governor, lieutenant governor, so certainly helpful. Yes, we did respond.
State local officials respond to new recycling reality, as we talked about before. There were some grants available, 2.6 million of grants to 247 Massachusetts municipalities. Did we apply?
Well, no.
Okay.
We get, we get basic grant money every year as a result of having basic recycling services. That's like, you know, 10 grand a year or something. But there are bigger grants you can apply for, for educational purposes and infrastructure.
I mean, 2.6 million for 247 communities, that's a lot of money. So we missed out on that, apparently. There's a nice article about the local wireless site review. I don't want to touch that. That's not fun. 3.9 million in grants awarded to 75 trail projects. We've got a trail project. Any thoughts on whether we went after some of that money?
That wasn't, we went after the complete streets.
Okay.
Dollars. And that's the one that's under construction now for Park Street.
I don't know about that. This trail projects includes the...
We didn't do, we didn't apply for the trail program.
Methu and Rail Trail, okay. We pick and choose what we apply for. We can't choose, we can't apply for both. Finally, and most importantly, our illustrious Nancy Griffin gets her photo in the...
Don't embarrass her.
In the beacon. And apparently it's not the only time. So if you want a signature, she'll take them for 10 bucks or give them for 10 bucks. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Select person Ryan.
Yeah, you can call me Selectman Ryan.
Okay.
I'm still a man. I just want to echo what you said about the DPW building. That was a great event and a great building. And like you said, you know, things take time and that took a long time to happen, but now that it's happened, it's a great thing. So something to be proud of, I think. Also, I'm most happy to see the turnout for the special election was actually pretty high, around 10%, I think it was. I think that was higher than the selectmen's race last spring. So that's a good thing. And I was happy with the results and just want to tip our hats to Mary Ann Staples and the town clerk's office for running, you know, running these elections very smoothly and efficiently, including the early voting that's going on now. I got my, did mine today. I got my sticker, which is very convenient. So I would encourage anyone, if you want to avoid the crowds at the high school on November 6th, is it? You know, get down to Town Hall anytime and much, much easier process. Small item, but I noticed when we get these parade applications, special event applications, there's a box that says, you know, cleanup. And so usually nine times out of 10, they write NA, not applicable. But for a lot of these parades, like the Halloween ones, which will probably be canceled, or Veterans at Christmas Parade, Holiday Parade, you know, there's a lot of candy being thrown all over the place. So I just, I don't know if it's already part of the process, but if it isn't, I would suggest it should be part of the process that the DPW comes through.
I think a lot of times they have the sweeper ready.
Next day or whatever.
Sweeper and they'll do what they got to do.
Probably gets done, but in case...
I don't want to speak for Mark, but I think, and like on the downtown night, they have the sweepers ready.
That's a big one. That's, that's, you know, probably the biggest spent all year. But even these smaller parades, people love to throw the candy around, which is great, but a lot of it ends up not getting picked up. And then just a suggestion for, I don't know if it's on our list of things to talk about in the near future, but in looking at the CIP budget and ideas, I know we, we've talked about the whole becoming a green community. And you talk about grant opportunities. You know, I know we're spending, I saw on one of the warrants, you know, a lot of money on windows and doors at the high school. Like, that's like the perfect type of project, you know, for that funding could go for. And I think I've mentioned in the past, Easton has gotten two, two grant cycles. I think they've gotten around $600,000 out of that, out of that process. So are we looking into that, Kevin? I know, or Joe? I forget who's actually leading that or where we are.
Where we left off with that, we had an initial meeting with our representative from the area. We need to set up a follow-up meeting, but we've just been inundated with all the rest of the things. So I just mentioned to John, we need to set up a follow-up meeting. And that we're going to do that first with internal staff to go over the presentation that was given to us at that time. I believe his name is Ian Pickering, who came from the state. And we're going to go through that information because there were some things that, of course, impact local building code. For the stretch code that would have to be adopted, there would be a change in a couple of different things that we do here programmatically when we remove certain pieces of apparatus on the fleet and that we would have to be committed to buying a different version of vehicles that certainly cost more, but it gets offset by grants. Approximately a couple hundred thousand dollars would come to Mansfield to invest in that annually. And then we get to choose to apply for specific grant-funded programs after that on top of the annual allocation.
And I'm not suggesting it's, you know, a slam dunk or like, we're absolutely going to do it.
But we do have further work to do on it, to your point.
And anyway, we could see that presentation. I think it would be helpful just to get the basic facts of this program and what some of the requirements are.
That'd be great. Absolutely.
All right. That's all for me. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. A couple of things.
Thank you.
Friday at 11:30 is the MMED Senior Electric Safety Luncheon. At the Council on Aging at 11:30, the Board of Light Commissioners are invited as long, as well as the TM. So if you guys can be there, that would be great. It's, that's funded by the light department. That's part of their, they have the percentage of their revenues has to go towards safety endeavors and we've been doing that for years. So I encourage anybody that can be there to be there. Monday night, we have an MMED meeting, Light Commissioners meeting here. Actually, it's at the DPW facility. We have meetings all over the place in this building, I guess, that night. So the meeting is at the MMED. I think there's only three of us that can make it. So if something happens to one of our three, let me know because we have MX coming in, so we have a lot to discuss. So if someone who was scheduled to come can't make it, please let me know. And again, to echo the highway safety building, we had a pile of dirt there a year and a half ago. And then we got this state-of-the-art facility. So Mansfield's moving forward in a lot of things, so. With that said, go Red Sox. Hope Michael's feeling better. And any, any other business tonight, gentlemen?
Carrie, else?
Seeing none, a call for motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you and good night.